You can talk about it at the meeting, yeah, during the discussion. It's on, Brian.
Okay.
You don't need to push anything, just...
I don't know if there were some...
I think you're...
Just the old petition on the agenda, I guess you...
Right.
That's the new agenda.
Right.
So you have all petitions.
Right.
You've got to paint the copies.
Welcome, everyone, to the January 13th meeting of the Yellow Springs Village Council. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Wintrae.
Yes.
Asquith.
Yes.
Sims.
Here.
Haush.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Also present are Chief of Police Anthony Pettiford, Director of Finance Melissa Van Zandt is either here or will be shortly, and interim Village Manager Kent Bristol.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by kind of giving the ground rules for the process here at the meeting. I've been trying to do that so there isn't any confusion. First of all, please turn off any electronic devices. And Village Council... Turn off or silence. Village Council encourages the participation of the public at our meetings, but with the expectation that order and decorum is preserved. The rules outlined are intended to promote dialogue, the full sharing of information and perspectives, and thoughtful analysis of the issues before council. Comments from the public are welcomed at two different times during the course of a regular meeting. Comments on items not on the agenda will be heard under Citizens Concerns, and comments on all items listed on the agenda will be heard during council's consideration of said item, subject to the following guidelines. The presiding officer must recognize citizens wishing to speak. When they've been recognized, you go to the microphone, give your name, and state the subject of your concern or comment. Comments should be addressed to the presiding officer. No conversations will be carried on between individual citizens in attendance or with individual council members except as recognized by the presiding officer. Do not delay or interrupt the proceedings or disturb recognized speakers. The use of profane or threatening language or gestures while making comments will not be tolerated. Individual comments should be limited to three minutes with only one comment per person. Persons with other views on the same subject will be given equal time for response. The presiding officer may terminate continued discussion at any point in the discussion after opposing views have been equally addressed. Citizens should address all staff and/or personnel matters to the village manager prior to coming to council, and persons who violate these rules may be asked to leave the meeting. So, any other announcements from staff or from council?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to announce about the upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. events, day events. I think everybody knows that that's a really important time for the community. And this Monday, the parade starts at 10:30. People will gather at Mills Law &amp; School. At 11:00, the program begins at the AME Church. And the theme for this year is, "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community?" And, yeah, it's going to be great. Booth Family Drummers are going to be there, if you haven't seen them perform. There's also going to be... The World House Choir is going to be there singing. And the address is going to be by Reverend William E. Randolph. And one thing that's exciting is this year is going to be the first annual MLK Peacemaker Award. And that has already been announced, that Hazel Tulecki and Bill Hudson have won...
Houston.
Hudson, sorry.
Houston.
Houston. Wait, what? Houston, right?
Houston.
Yeah, sorry. Houston. Yeah. Have won that jointly. So I think that's great, and I hope everybody comes out on Monday.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. The minutes of the December 16th council meeting. Page 1. Page 2. Page 3. Page 4. Page 5. Page 6. And page 7.
I have a typo, I guess, on 7. Second paragraph, second line. Near the end, it says, "Entire..." Entirely. Noted that, "The entire league of the..."
Entirely.
So it should be a T.
Thanks.
Okay. Motion to approve? Oh, wait, 7, 8. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Review of the agenda. Does anyone have any comments or changes on the agenda? It's chock-full. I guess the one comment... Well, I won't make that comment. Anything? Okay. Lori, will you review the petitions and communications, please?
Yeah. And I will mainly just be reviewing the ones that actually wound up in the electronic packet, those that came in too late. There are a few that I haven't glanced at, but I don't want to try to summarize them. The first is from Rick Donahoe. Most of them have to do with the CBE. One has to do with Antioch College and the use of the golf course. So Rick Donahoe opposes the funding for the community... Or for the CBE, and is concerned about sprawl. William Firestone also is opposed to the public funding of the CBE. I wrote a letter explaining how I've come to change my mind and now oppose this funding of the CBE. Steve Heckart supports the funding of the CBE and thinks it would be a good thing for the community. Paeoniacatus, I know he goes by Taki. Manolakos opposes the use of public funds for the Center for Business and Education. And Carmen Milano writes, saying that she is also opposed to the public funding of the CBE. Dan Reyes wrote, saying he has concerns about the design of the CBE, particularly University Way. And the final letter is the letter from... Oh, no, there's another letter from Alex Melamed, who supports the CBE but is concerned about pedestrian and bicycle traffic being pretty much excluded, and that the design principles don't seem to be taking that into account. Yeah, I'm sorry, I think there was a separate letter that I was remembering, but I don't think made it into this electronic packet.
Aurelia Blake.
Aurelia Blake. That's on the table, but it's not in the...
Was that in the packet?
E packet.
No, I sent... It came in today, so...
Right. And there's also a letter from John Eastman. And there was a letter from the Open Space Committee, and I think that also came in.
No, that was in the packet. And I...
It just must not be... Oh, right. It wasn't tabbed for me, sorry. So this is from... Oh, and I'm sorry, I skipped over Sue Avandroth. William Firestone had another one saying he was opposed, but Sue Avandroth had one supporting the CBE. And the Open Space Coalition, Yellow Springs Open Space Coalition, opposing the use that Antioch College is making of the golf course area.
There was also the letter from Vivian Daly, Environment Ohio.
I usually just go over the letters from community members, but if there's something you want to...
Nope.
...enforce from Vivian's letter. I believe it was about... Can you remind me?
Yeah, it was about global warming and...
Right.
Supporting letter about that.
Right, for Environment Ohio.
Right.
Yes.
And I also... I don't see the letter from Alex Melamed on this list, and I didn't get that. I don't believe.
It's in the electronic packet.
But it's not on the list. It's...
Okay. Got left off.
Okay.
I'm not sure when that one came in.
I wanted to mention the letter from... It was from Ann Erickson, representing the Yellow Springs Open Space Coalition, about, as Lori said, work that's going on in the golf course. And I received that personally, forwarded on to the council packet. I've asked Kent to take that on, to talk with the folks. I just went... I hope that's okay with council, that they're okay with that direction.
Yeah.
For the time being, so...
I do...
And I believe Kent has had made some inquiries already.
Yes.
So, thank you.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Regarding that. What I noticed when I was looking at the zoning code is that we have no definition for sustainable farming, which is one of the things that the group is concerned about. And I believe there was supposed to be a definition, but there isn't. I believe I forwarded maybe one to you, which...
That I thought was...
And I don't know who would do that. But it needs to be in the code.
I've got to tell you, there's all kinds of little pieces like that that are coming to light, little pieces that are missing that I don't think are... That were intended to be in, that aren't. So I think relatively quickly, we're probably going to have to have a conversation either with Chris Conner or go back to the consultant and ask how we take this kind of first process of updating. I mean, they all said we were going to have to do that. So... But I'm just noticing quite a few things that are missing.
So are you keeping a list of these things, or how do we keep...
I started a list.
Okay, great, thank you.
So if you can add that to your list with Kent, that would be great.
So we'll move on to public hearings and legislation. First is the correction of a clerical error to ordinance 2013-28 supplemental appropriation for fourth quarter.
Is Melissa Van Zandt...
She is here.
Oh, move on down. This is a quick explanation. And it does not have to be reread, it's just a correction.
Melissa Van Zandt, Finance Director. Basically, what happened, when I was getting acclimated to the budget, there was a supplemental appropriation that was done, 2013-28. And basically what happened, if you look at the bottom of those, on the last page, there's a current budget figure, an amended amount, and then an amended budget. What happened was from 2013-24, instead of using the amended budget total at the bottom of the second page, they used... The interim Finance Director used the current budget. So it made the beginning budget off by... I'm not sure exactly what it is. I don't have the calculation on hand, but the starting budget figure was wrong. The amendments were correct, and the amended budget bottom line was different. The new one is... Should read 11-594912. So it was basically starting off with the wrong number on the supplemental appropriation. So it was just correcting that. And I talked with the auditors, and we just needed an updated one, since it didn't really change anything other than just that starting budget being wrong.
Thanks, Melissa. Next is second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2013-22 Vacating an Alley Located Between East-South College and Marshall Streets.
Okay, whereas pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 723.05, Village Council has determined that there is good cause for vacating an alley located west of Liberman Street between East-South College Street and Marshall Street, as depicted on Attachment A Alley, and that such vacation will not be detrimental to the general interest. And whereas pursuant to Yellow Springs Ordinance 1224.02, the Yellow Springs Planning Commission gave notice of a public hearing regarding the vacation of this alley 10 days in advance in the local newspaper. All abutting property owners to the right of way in question were notified of the public hearing by mail. And whereas at the public hearing on this matter, no abutting property owners appeared to oppose the vacation. And the Yellow Springs Planning Commission has recommended vacation of this alley to the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs. Now therefore, the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, Green County hereby ordains that. Section 1, the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs hereby accepts the recommendation of Planning Commission and finds there is good cause for vacation of the alley, and said vacation is not detrimental to the general interest of the public. Section 2, the Village hereby retains a utility easement, including but not limited to electric storm sewer, sanitary sewer, waterline, cable line, and gas line. Said easements are attached here to and incorporated herein in Attachment B. Section 3, the Council hereby orders the alley be vacated. Section 4, this ordinance should go into effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We've talked about this at the last meeting. This is the area... The alley area where WYSO is. And it's basically giving them access. We will retain easements. Kent, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, it's the old Kettering Lab building.
Right.
Basically, the building already encroaches on this alley, and there's also been another utility...
They have an emergency generator.
Right. An emergency generator that was also installed in the alley. And it's also been broken up on the other end of the alley. So normally, I'm sort of opposed to alley vacation, but this one was effectively vacated. This just makes it so that they don't have a building that's actually in an alleyway. But it's never been used as an alley, or not, for many, many years. So I think this is really a tidying up thing that's a pretty reasonable request.
Judy? Oh, we need to open... This is the second reading and a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing for comments from citizens. Yes, come up to the microphone, please.
My name is Catherine Hitchcock. I'm also speaking for my husband, Michael Hitchcock. We are opposed to public funding of the CBE.
Oh, that's not what we're talking about.
All we're talking about right now is this alleyway vacation. So we promise we'll flag that one when it's time.
Any comments on the alley vacation?
I have a question. Who will own that property?
Antioch College.
Thank you.
And the village retains our utility easements.
Thank you.
Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Asquith. Yes. Haush.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Wintrae.
Yes.
Could I respond to Mr. Rose?
Sure.
Typically, when we vacate an alley, half of the property goes to the owner on either side, but in this case, Antioch owns both sides. 15-foot strip of weeds.
Before we get to the discussion of the CBE bond legislation, I learned today of a potential conflict of interest dating back to February 2006, when my husband was appointed through his employer, K4 Green Architecture, to the Architectural Review Committee by Education Village, the entity that owns the CBE property. Ted left that architectural firm later that same year. In an abundance of caution, I believe it is in the best interest of this process that I recuse myself from tonight's discussion pending a review by the Village Solicitor and Bond Counsel whether an actual conflict of interest exists. And I will turn the meeting over to Lori.
Okay. Thank you. I think, since this is a very long ordinance, I think if you can read the title and the "whereas's," and then maybe what we'll do at that point, rather than reading through everything else, which is many, many pages, would take us a lot of time. But the "whereas's" establish why it's being done, and it's, I think, helpful to just have that being read into the public record. And then what we can do is have Kent summarize exactly what we're ordaining. And obviously, if anybody would like to have any part of it highlighted or read, we'd be happy to do that, but there's lots of definitions, and it's a rather complicated matter, so...
I have a question.
Yes.
Process. How many readings are there going to be of this ordinance?
Well, my understanding is an ordinance typically has two readings, so this would be the first public hearing.
I think we were told before that there were going to be three, and that's what I'm...
I can explain that if you like.
Sure.
Because there was a... Because of the snow date, we moved the meeting up by a week, or back, whatever it is, which leaves only one week between what would be a first reading and a second reading. It's required that there's 10 days from the announcement in the newspaper and the publication of the summary before you're able to take a vote, which therefore there's... But you have to put it in within a certain time after that first reading. So there is not enough time for you to be able to take a first vote and a second vote. You wouldn't be able to comply with the legal requirements. So the decision was that it receive three readings, given that there was a great deal of public interest and desire for input, just to give that process more time to take place. So a final vote cannot occur until February 3rd.
Okay. Does that answer your question, then?
It does, yes. I guess I think it would be good if there were one extra meeting as originally planned.
Okay. So what that means is we'll be discussing this tonight. We'll be discussing this a week from tonight, and we'll be discussing it again on February 3rd, because we know you all love to keep coming to these meetings. So we're going to read it first, and then I promise we'll get to you, Jim, when there's time for public discussions. We'll keep a list of people wanting to speak to it, so...
All right. So ordinance 2014-01 is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $995,000 for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of acquiring and constructing certain permanent infrastructure and roadway improvements in the village, together with necessary appurtenances thereto, and authorizing a bond registrar agreement and a bond purchase agreement. Whereas this council by Resolution Number 2006-15 passed April 3, 2006, authorized the village manager to participate with the Department of the Army Corps of Engineers, USACE, in the design and construction of the Center for Business and Education water and sewer infrastructure improvements, which project is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Dayton Yellow Springs Road and East Enin Road, in the village and the county of Green... In the village and the county of Green, Ohio... Well, in the village of Yellow Springs and the county of Green, Ohio. And whereas the village manager has executed an agreement with USACE for design and construction assistance for the Yellow Springs Center for Business and Education Water and Sewer Project effective May 14, 2007, the USACE agreement. And whereas in addition to the design and construction of certain water and sewer improvements addressed in the USACE agreement, the village hereby determines to proceed with the acquisition, construction, improvement, and installation of further permanent public infrastructure and roadway improvements described herein as part of the Center for Business and Education project. And whereas this council finds and determines that it is in the best interest of the village to issue general obligation bonds in accordance with Chapter 133 of the Ohio Revised Code in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $995,000, the bonds, for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of acquiring and constructing certain permanent infrastructure and roadway improvements, including the acquisition, construction, improvement, and installation of Gateway Drive accessing Dayton Yellow Springs Road and proceeding to a terminus in University Way intersecting Gateway Drive, as depicted as Phase 1 on the schematic plan dated May 1, 2013, provided by Heinz Engineering LLC, the schematic plan, and sanitary sewer system improvements, waterwork system improvements, stormwater management, curbs and gutters, pavement and traffic control devices in conjunction therewith, together with the necessary appurtenances therefore in construction and project management improvements, and to pay capitalized interest on the bonds and cost of issuance of the bonds. And whereas the schematic plan is attached here to as Exhibit A, and by this reference is made a part hereof, and whereas this council has requested that the village manager certify the estimated life or period of probable usefulness of the improvements in the maximum maturity of the bonds described in Section 2, as prescribed in Chapter 133 of the Ohio Revised Code and the Charter of Yellow Springs, Ohio, the charter, with such certifications as required thereby, including Section 46, certification of Heinz Engineering LLC. And whereas, in accordance with the foregoing, the village manager has certified to this council that the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvements described in Section 2 is at least five years, and that the maximum maturity of the bonds is at least 20 years.
Okay. So that's all the "whereas's." Now Kent, would you mind summarizing exactly what we are ordaining therefore to do?
Sure. Okay. We have a grant of about 400... Roughly $400,000 from the U.S. government. And if we combine the proceeds from this bond sale, we will have the money to put in street, storm drainage, water, and sewer facilities on the piece of property at the corner of Dayton Yellow Springs and East Enin Road, and open that property up for development as a business park. Most of the figures quoted here are maximums or not to be exceeded. In other words, we don't expect the real bond issue to be quite $995,000. What would happen is if you authorize the borrowing, there are some other steps that need to take place before you actually incur debt. And one of those is to go out for bids for the actual construction of the project, make sure the cost is within the boundaries that we can afford. And then you... When you know your actual construction cost, then you issue the bonds. Margaret Comey is here. She wrote the ordinance, and she is a bond counsel from Squire Sanders.
So perhaps we should bring her up to...
Sure.
...explain the ordinance in more detail, hopefully in ways that regular people can understand and follow to some degree. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Margaret Comey. I've met most of you before. And I work with Squire Sanders, and we are public finance attorneys who work on tax municipal bond financings for public improvements. And so I drafted this ordinance, and what we have tried to accomplish here, and first I should say that I'm quite humbled, because I know I'm in the room with a lot of people that have both J.D.s and M.V.A.s and master's degrees, and in addition to being very passionate community citizens. So I hope I can address whatever questions you may have. The intent of the bond ordinance, it's sort of like, where do you cut into the circle? Because at a given point in time, we don't really know what the actual bid prices will be that come back after you bid the improvements, if you proceed, and if you do that. It's actually been the case in the last... Certainly since the beginning of the Great Recession, the bids often and usually come in underestimate. So what we've tried to do is use maximum amounts, and then at the point in time where you actually price the issue, we would expect the principal amount to be less. We know that the interest... We expect that the interest rates will be less. Connors &amp; Company ran some estimates based on the market today, and on a 20-year roadway issue, the rates for each maturity, because over 20 years, they're different maturities. So if I buy the bond that matures in the first or second year out, it's short-term paper. So, you know, the interest rate I'm seeking is going to compete with other short-term rates. So the rates will start out low, and then they'll go higher as you go farther out. That's why we talk about the net interest rate cost, or the net interest cost to the project, because we have to average those. But anyway, we would expect, in today's market, those rates, Connors Reports is running from 1 or 1.5 up to 4.75, I believe. So the average of those rates would be somewhere in the middle, and so clearly, it will be well under 6. With quantitative easing, you know, you never know. I try... We always try to draft, as a matter of practice, ordinances so that... So that we don't have to come back to step one again, even though, as we get farther down the road, we have more information from the bidders, and we can cut it back.
Right.
If that makes sense. So with that in mind, what we've done is, we had to consider the requirements of Chapter 133 of... I'm sorry if my back is to you. Chapter 133...
You can move that.
Oh, okay. Is over here better? Chapter 133 of the Ohio Revised Code is our version of the Uniform Bond Law. So that... Those are our statutory requirements that we have to meet. In addition, we have to consider constitutional requirements in Ohio. There are certain debt limitations that are contained, both by statute, but in this case, we consider the 10 mil indirect debt limit. And then we, of course, consider your charter provisions. And there are some unique provisions in your charter that may not apply to another village or municipal corporation. So... So, we consider all those things when we draft this, and make sure we comply with each of those. And in the end, the goal is to set out the parameters of the financing, which are then, the actual terms are set, I would expect, if you proceed, after you get bids for your project, and before you award those bids, when we have an idea of what the all-in numbers are. One thing that we're also sort of wary of right now is that with the announcement by the Federal Reserve that the quantitative easing, QE3, may be lifted or eased off, there is the thought that, and I always have to disclaim, I'm not in the business of predicting interest rates, but I think if you read the Wall Street Journal or any of the financial press, that they expect that longer-term rates will start to move up. And so, that would indicate that if you want to keep the net interest cost down, you know, sooner rather than later is maybe a good idea. The other consideration that we had, and since I've been up here to talk with you all before, Kent has done a fair amount of work talking with the Corps of Army Engineers, and we asked that there's sort of been a, sort of be a fund accounting, what has been spent. And the reason is that we, again, we want to size the issue properly so that you, A, have enough, you don't want to have too much, because for one thing, you don't want to incur that cost, but secondly, the IRS doesn't want you to have a, what they call, an over-issuance problem. So, I mentioned all these things because there really is a lot of thought that goes into trying to create a document like this. On the other hand, you don't want to be in the situation where you don't have enough to complete it, or if you don't borrow all of it, which is fine, because you're only borrowing a portion of it anyway. If you proceed, you would take the proceeds plus the grant dollars that you expect to receive from the Corps of Army Engineers, and you would have enough to complete construction. I've thrown a lot at you. I'm sure there are probably questions. I would also just say that in considering the bond ordinance, what you're doing is demonstrating a determination to proceed with the improvements, but you are not actually committed on the terms of the bond issue. You could always, you know, not issue bonds, I suppose, and reject your bids, until that point in time when a bond purchase contract is signed. And John Connors talked about that when he was up here before. That happens when you actually are at the point in time when you're pricing the issue. And at that point, the underwriter makes a commitment to you that he'll take the bonds at a certain rate, which are priced on a given day and a given market, and you commit to him that you will in fact issue those bonds to them as the original purchaser. Again, if this proceeds on the basis that we were thinking of when this was drafted, that would probably happen in March.
Yes.
It's probably the timeline. So, Kent did some accounting on the grant dollars spent, because the money you're getting from the Corps is 75% of the estimated cost of these environmentally necessary or requisite improvements. It's a portion of the project. And that grant requires 25% in matching funds. So, what Kent did was go back and sort of do some accounting on what had been spent on planning and design and that kind of thing, to make sure that we were lined up for, A, not losing the grant, but B, the timing was correct on being able to get reimbursed by the Corps. And he's done that accounting, and it looks fine. So, the 25% is almost complete.
Yes.
Have I neglected anything, Kent? Okay. I hope that's helpful.
I actually had a question from a citizen that I want, I would like you to explain, the final whereas in this document, before the now or now therefore.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain that language?
Sure.
It seems like kind of boilerplate language, but I think it's confusing.
Yeah.
At least five, that the usefulness is at least five years, and the maximum maturity of the bonds is at least 20 years.
Right. The Uniform Bond Law, Chapter 133 of the Code, Ohio Revised Code, in Sections 19 and 20, set out the requirements for, they, the legislature didn't want jurisdictions issuing bonds that were out for a longer period of time than the usefulness of the capital improvements that you were making. And so, if you look at that code section, 133.20, it'll tell you that the maximum maturity for bonds issued to finance the acquisition of real estate is 40 years. For sewer improvements, it's X number of years, and for, let me get my worksheet here. I took the engineer's estimate for this project, which was $1,100,000, which Kent provided to me with a breakdown by components, you know, what the roadway improvements would cost, what the waterworks system improvements would cost, what the ductile pipe for the, you know, water, and this, that, and the other thing. And they gave me a breakdown that might have said $191,000 for X component, $275,000 for Y component, okay? Then I had to take those components and match them against that section in the Revised Code, and come up with the weighted average maturity of bonds, okay? And so, that is what this whereas is about, because the code requires that the fiscal officer of the jurisdiction certify to the legislative authority, you all, that the useful life of the improvements being made is at least five years. Think of it like depreciable assets under the IRS Code. It's kind of the same, it's the same concept. And that it's at least five years, because you can't issue bonds in Ohio for, to finance improvements that have a useful life of less than five years. So, the minimum's five, but in fact, in this case, after we did the weighted average calculation, it turns out that the maximum maturity is at least 20 years. In fact, it's more than 20, it's in the twenties.
Basically, these roads and pipes are going to last as long as roads and pipes typically last, and that's not just five years.
That's right, right. The sewer improvements are expected to last, yeah, a minimum of 40 years. Another aspect, you know, landscaping, X years.
Right.
Lighting, it's all set out in the code. So, I just matched that up, and that's what that language is there for, to meet that requirement.
All right. Any questions or comments from council, and then I promise we will get to questions from the citizens. Anybody want to make any questions or comments at this point? Okay. I'm going to open it up to citizens' comments. We typically, sorry, I've got to type in my password again, so it always throws me off a little. We typically allow three minutes per comment, and we've got this new fancy thing, and I don't know how to use this new fancy thing, but you're going to use it. Okay. Whereas normally, it's been my cellphone, and I get so engrossed, I forget to turn it on, you know? So, this is really much better, I think. So, Judy is, we're going to try this new fangled system, and you will be able to see how much time you have left, which is much better. You won't wonder if I'm giving preferential treatment to my friends or something like that. So, I need to create a list, and I know that we already had this lovely person in the brown sweater wanting to get up and speak, and that Jim Rose also raised his hand. Can you tell me your name quick?
Bill Firestone.
Bill Firestone wants to speak for some reason. Okay. Yeah. I don't have my, oh, Demi, yes! Sorry, I got to have my, anymore I have to have my glasses on, and they're very smudged. Yeah, can you tell me your name?
Allison Moody.
Allison Moody. Okay. Yes, anyone else wanting to speak? Yeah, back in the back, and then?
Hans Jacobson.
Hans Jacobson. And then Judy Rose, of course. Suddenly, I had that moment of blanking in my head, which happens a lot. Yeah.
Lisa.
Lisa Abels, of course. Why don't I stick with that, and then we'll do another set, once we've heard from all of these people? And what I would say is, try not to do too much repetition, pay attention to what other people are saying, and if they've already said it, trust that we are hearing it, we're taking it in. And our general practice is we don't engage in a kind of back-and-forth. We try to collect a lot of questions, and then, if there's questions, we can answer on the spot. We try to then answer them at the end. But sometimes, you're asking questions that we don't have the information, or nobody does. So, we will just probably just sort of take those and take them into consideration, and if they need to be researched, we try to do that research between now and the next meeting. So, if you would go ahead and come up and remind me of your name, because I didn't write it down, so I had to just write the color of your sweater down.
Right. I'm the woman in the brown sweater.
Yes.
My name is Catherine Hitchcock.
Catherine Hitchcock, thank you.
My husband, Michael, and I have lived in Yellow Springs almost 30 years. I want jobs, and I want more jobs for people who live here. I do not support public funding for the CBE. I think, because it's very risky, I think it's, we just don't know if it's going to work, and there's evidence out there that says that there's a pretty good chance that it might not. The other thing that I'm concerned about, too, is that we're not, it doesn't appear as if there's, there are other places in town, I think, that we could collaborate with, we could do some planning with. There are spaces that could be developed. That seems to me to be more in the spirit in which we work in this town. We work with other people where there is the opportunity to make something that, out of space, that's already here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And of course, we, even though you have three minutes, and you're allowed to use all of it, if you don't, we are also grateful to you for being succinct. So, the next person on the list, I believe, is Jim Rose, because he had us end up earlier.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am not an official member of a small vocal posse, but I am a concerned citizen who shares some of the concerns that I think are probably represented among the audience here this evening. And I am particularly concerned about the possibility that there will not be an opportunity for a referendum, because the third reading apparently takes place after the due date for application for referendum passes. I find that to be, if it's true, a very unfortunate reality, and I hope council will bend every effort to make sure that the village citizens will have the opportunity, before this is passed into legislation, to vote up or down on the proposition.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right, Bill, Firestone, you're next.
Hi, I'm Bill Firestone. I would like to preface my remarks with a question to the supporters of this project. Many of us in Yellow Springs are internet entrepreneurs in the process of reinventing ourselves in response to a rapidly changing business environment. Why should we be asked to subsidize your brick-and-mortar fantasies? Just for fun, let's pretend you're spending your own money. You've already heard the flashy sales pitches. I have here an important document that I believe all council members should familiarize themselves with before voting on moving forward with the CBE. This document reveals, or gives a glimpse, at the inner workings of the CBE. I'm going to read to you verbatim excerpts from this public document. The name of this document, which was filed on March 13th, 2006, is the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions for the Center of Business and Education, and it is still a live document as of last week. It's still at the Green County Recorder's Office, and as far as I know, as of last week, has not been replaced with another document. Section 1, Definitions. 1.4, Architectural Guidelines, the set of standards, rules, and regulations that may be adopted by the Architectural Review Committee. 1.5, Architectural Review Committee, the individual or individuals designated who shall review and either approve, modify, or reject all development, construction, landscaping, and site plans. Section 4, Approval of Plans. The committee, at its discretion, may waive the requirements for any of the foregoing plans that it deems are not applicable or material. The Architectural Review Committee shall not unreasonably withhold approval of any plans that conform in every way with the architectural guidelines. Section 6, Variances. The Architectural Review Committee shall have the right to approve all against two or other variations from the architectural guidelines without the necessity of granting a formal variance. Approval of plans and specifications by the committee containing items that do not conform to the architectural guidelines shall constitute sufficient authority to depart from the architectural guidelines. Section 12, Duration and Termination. 12.1, All the covenants and restrictions shall run with the land and shall be binding until the 30th anniversary after the recording of this declaration, and there's opportunity for 10-year extensions after that. Okay, last section I want to read. Section 3.1, Section 3, Architectural Review Committee, 3.1. The Architectural Review Committee shall consist of not less than one person and no more than three persons. Initially, the Architectural Review Committee shall consist of one person. Ted Donnell. This is a highly restrictive covenant mandating very expensive development. If you get a chance, head on over to Progress Drive in Beaver Creek to see how fancy the buildings are. They're not fancy. This project will be bad for our public schools. A TIF would delay increased revenues to our schools. Superintendent Bassor has already indicated that he needs $200,000 more dollars a year to implement the popular 2020 plan. Without a TIF, if private development was successful, increased taxes would flow immediately to schools. Tell someone with a kid in the schools that they'll get their money 20 years down the line, don't worry about it. Beaver Creek Schools refused the TIF demanded by the Green. The Beaver Creek School Board told the Green they knew that the development would happen with or without the TIF. If you doubt my word, give my friend Cheryl Sheddin a call in Beaver Creek. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Demi Reber, you're next. Thank you, appreciate your comments. It's kind of a fire alarm that goes off, so.
Yeah, I'm going to talk quick before it goes dinging at me. Okay, I want to say first of all that I attended the forum last Thursday that was initiated to give a chance to people who had serious concerns about public funding, and so, there were some other voices there. And I hope that council will look and listen to this forum. There were several important things that happened there. First, we heard perspectives from three businesswomen with experience in city planning, mortgages, and real estate and development. They all talked about further information needed to assess the risks, the risks the village is taking. They raised questions that have not been discussed here yet. I can't go into specifics, I hope maybe some people here will speak later, including, some of the things, including, how this plan fits into the current state of the market, and a variety of procedures that would yield more information, like risk assessments. They also talked about gaps that appear to exist in council and CR's procedural behavior, which, if corrected, would make for better tracking and transparency. They questioned the plan that calls for creating an infrastructure design, that is, what we've got going now to fund, e.g., a road through the middle of the cornfield in a cul-de-sac, before any businesses have expressed interest in being there. How can we know what will be suitable for these businesses that may express interest? The second important thing that happened in the forum's discussion included alternatives to the current plan that are less costly and less risky, including Dawn's suggestion of investing $60,000 to provide infrastructure for frontage instead of $1 million, as planned. The discussion itself began encouraging people to speak of their visions for all The discussion itself began encouraging people to speak of their visions for alternatives. They spoke enthusiastically about visions that would be more in keeping with what they value in Yellow Springs. Many of them called for using CBE to launch Yellow Springs on a path to make it a mecca of sustainability, linking organic agriculture initiatives with Midwest Sustainability Program, teaching and living sustainability projects for farm-to-table enterprises, renewable energy. People spoke with much feeling about what they care about in Yellow Springs and how we could better use the million dollars to address that. Others here can speak with greater specificity. But I just wanted to point out that the forum presented important new information and vision and hope and energy, all of which makes it so important to not vote this legislation in at this moment. Finally, it appears that the fear that of losing the $400,000 has been exaggerated. Let's take the time to do this right. Thank you.
Okay. Allison Moody.
I would like to urge council to vote no on allocating additional public funds for the CBE under Community Resources' current plan. Based on expert opinion that clearly explains why this is a bad investment, the personal opinion of many villagers expressing their opposition to the project and the imminent threat of referendum, I cannot conceive as to why a single council member would vote yes tonight. Community Resources has had 15 years to court businesses and developers to their project. There is a reason why no one in the private sector will invest money into this. Demand drives development, and there is no reliable demand for the CBE. Community Resources' argument as to why we need to, as to why they need our money to expand infrastructure is to provide shovel-ready land for future users. I agree that this is something that can sway a business to build. But that objective can be accomplished by the plan that Don Johnson has presented. This would cost a fraction of the present request, less than $60,000, and would provide infrastructure to the first phase of development. Funds from the sale of the land could be reinvested by CR to complete the remaining infrastructure, therefore investing their money and not ours. Equally important, Community Resources has not done their due diligence in presenting a convincing argument as to why this is a sound investment. Their responsibility is theirs and should not be put on the shoulders of everyday villagers to convince you otherwise. After all, they are the ones asking for our money. I'm disappointed by the lack of willingness to compromise by Community Resources. Myself and others have publicly and privately given multiple solutions that would appease both sides of this argument. This is not an us versus them issue. We are all here because we want what is best for Yellow Springs. This is collective money being gambled, and we all deserve ample consideration. Compromise is possible. In conclusion, I believe Yellow Springs should be a beacon of light for a just and truly sustainable society. Our public money and efforts could be better spent on funding responsible agriculture, renewable energy, the arts, and educating others about these ideals. I have ideas for environmentally responsible commercial and residential development that would provide jobs and affordable housing for people who already live here. I also have ways for existing buildings, including those owned by the village, to become nearly net-zero energy efficient for little to no initial investment and also receive monthly revenue from those improvements. If anyone in council would like to discuss these ideas or the compromised solutions for the CBE, I'd be happy to meet with you at your convenience. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. I appreciate that. Okay. Hans. And then after Hans will be Judy. And after Judy, Lisa.
Ladies, gentlemen, thank you. I'm Hans Jacobsen, a village resident. I think it's wonderful that we're trying to improve the economic condition of Yellow Springs. That's excellent. I do have, I guess my question is kind of a point of order, and I'm wondering why this is railroading forward. If Karen Winthrop was the deciding vote on the CBE referendum, and she has excused herself from the conversations because of a possible conflict of interest, shouldn't she have recused herself from the vote that happened on the 16th? And what are the forces that are continuing to push this forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. All right, Judy Rose, next.
I merely want to add another voice to many that have been up here saying that I do not support the use of my tax dollars for this CBE project. I believe that CBE has had ample time to be successful, if they're going to be successful. And I don't see any evidence that indicates to me that just paying to have this infrastructure done will make them more successful. In fact, it might even make them less if the organizations that want to move here don't find the infrastructure layout convenient.
Thank you, Judy. Lisa Abel.
So I get four minutes? Three minutes? Just kidding, just kidding. Okay. I'm looking for kind of the big picture economic issue here. So if I look 10 to 15 years back, we started losing Anya Publishing and Vernay. Six years ago, we passed what appears to be a permanent tax increase for property taxes of $760,000 a year. I don't see that going away. And in fact, that's probably replacing the income we got from those other businesses that are gone. The schools are going to be looking for probably an increase in taxes at some point in time to keep their schools going. If I look forward, wages and benefits for staff are going to continue to go up. We've seen some decrease in staff, fairly quietly attrition at the assistance for village manager level. I don't know how much more staff can be cut in the years coming. So I want to look 10 to 15 years ahead. And I'm looking for something progressive, which would be future thinking, which would be planning for the future. How do we plan to cover for these increases in spending that we're looking at? And the only plans I've heard are things like, well, let's have Anya College do it. Well, they've got a college to run. They've got to prove that they can keep themselves afloat after they stop giving free rides to every student. And they've got a lot of work ahead of them just to run their college. The other thing I've heard as well, Community Resources could have done this and didn't. I was a member of Community Resources for a number of years. And we did a lot of work to secure funding, to secure land, to move this process forward. And one of the big things I learned is when you get funding from the federal government, it takes about 10 times longer than you expect. So we haven't been sitting on our thumbs on this project. And in fact, it's as far along as we could get it before the ODOT money disappeared. And just lastly, just to reemphasize that the businesses that are going to go in the CBE will generate the kind of property tax, income tax, that will sustain and move this village forward. It will not be retail. It will not be restaurants. It will be, it'll be more industrial, possible industrial, probably more professional offices and services. Could be something with these agriculture ideas, which I would love to hear about. So anyway, just want to add my support there.
Okay, perfect timing. Thank you. All right, I can take another list. Chrissy Cruz will be the next on the list. Tell me your name. Jean, okay, sorry. It's a little hard to see in this light. And as I say, my glasses are smudged. And I have that moment of deer in the headlights. I know you, but I can't think of your name. Anybody else? So I've got Chrissy Cruz, Jean Ballantyne. Any other? Oh, Judith Ezekiel. And Jerry Sutton. Okay, well, we'll stick with those four names for now. So Chrissy Cruz, go ahead and come on up.
Hello, my name's Chrissy Cruz. I want to say I object to the public funding of the CBE. And I want to use some of the words from Community Resources themselves to explain part of why I am objecting to the public funding of the CBE. This is a document that Community Resources had posted online. It's no longer linked to their website, but it's still available. It's still online. They were asked, the reason I'm bringing this up is because at the last meeting, Karen Winthrop provided us with a document that was a timeline that said, "You've supported us all along. Your council's voted yes on all these issues, and you've always been in support of the CBE." Well, yes, we have. Well, that was because we were being told all along that we weren't going to have to pay for it. Now it's a different story that they want money. In their very own words, they said over and over again, "This document says you've opened the door to other development, and we're afraid of sprawl. How can you help with this?" While it says, "Uncontrolled development occurs when there is little or no process for public checks and balances. Tools to prevent sprawl are largely within the village's control and include annexation, zoning, planning, the village's comprehensive plan, definition of urban service boundaries, and blah, blah, blah." This is basically saying that we are supposed to respect our comprehensive plan, which says that we don't pay for infrastructure. Later in this document, it says, the question is, "How does having McGregor on the CIC land increase the tax revenues, therefore helping the community, especially if local tax money has to be spent to develop the property?" It says in the fourth paragraph, "Local government is not in a position to fund the development of infrastructure for this project. We are working with federal and state funding sources for grant money. This helps the Yellow Springs community to get back some of the dollars we send to Washington." It goes on. There's two more incidences where they're asking about getting money from us. And it says further, "The village is not eager or able to pay for much. How much of my tax dollars are going to go to this? So far, zero. The EDRLF wasn't created with tax dollars. It came from a federal grant more than 20 years ago. Village government is cash poor and does not have local tax dollars to commit to this project." And then further in this document on page five, and this is their own statement, it speaks to the development of the property. "Is the $100,000 from community funds a gift, is a gift or a loan, and whether the rest of the center's development would be environmentally sound and green?" The answer is, "Community Foundation issued a grant of $100,000 to Community Resources to help with purchase of land. As a grant, it does not need to be paid back. Ted Donnell with K4 Architecture is LEED certified and will incorporate environmentally sound designs into the site and building plans." So again, we have the conflict of interest of Ted Donnell being in charge of the architecture.
All right, thank you for your comments. Jean Ballantyne. Thank you.
I thought this might come up, so I didn't volunteer before. But I'm curious about what kind of research has been done in the area. And I think there has been some done. I'm just not familiar with it. But what kind of research as to vacant places, places that other businesses might go, and so on? And maybe that information's out there, but I'm not aware of it. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Jean. Judith Ezekiel. And then Jerry Sutton, you'll be after Judith.
Hello. I just have a very quick comment. I agree with much of what's been said. I'm opposed to the CBE project. I hesitated for a long time, read up a lot, and the arguments that have already been given have convinced me. But I just want to respond to something that's been said on the internet that I've already said to two different people. I've heard from recently elected council members that they consider that they have a mandate, or one person, anyone considered. But I've heard other people repeat that argument, that having been elected in the last election constitutes a mandate. And I just want to say from the people that, in my environment and circle of friends, that there were many different issues, there were many candidates, and that I voted for two people who support the CBE, but I do not. And that I voted for people on other issues. There are multiple issues for which we voted for the various council members. And I do not want to hear people say that I've given you a mandate on the CBE. I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
All right, Jerry Sutton.
Jerry Sutton. I'm a proponent. I approached this board almost five months ago with this opportunity in August last year. The world changes. We had, we, Community Resources, had gone forth, acquired federal grants due to design with the expectation it'd be completed and sufficient money. We lost $344,000 because it was not timely executed. The balance of the money. People have received recently some assurance that the Corps of Engineering money will be with us a little longer. But all it takes is a stroke of a pen, another emergency. They look for money, and it's gone. I can assure you that that could happen. So why do I think this is a good idea? Our commercial and industrial base in this village has eroded significantly in the last 10 years. The last significant change in industrial base was in 2008 when Vernay tore down their former plant. That took $1.1 million off of the property tax rate. That, to pay for that tax, to offset that, we, the village, residents, homeowners, had to pony up that difference. That's the way it works. When the village passes a levy, they ask for 700, some thousand dollars. It goes through a magic formula. Part of it's allocated to the industrial base. Part of it comes to the residential base. If the industrial base dwindles, when our property is reappraised, we're still going to get that $750,000, even though the commercial property went away. It is shifted to the commercial, to the real property, the homeowners, the renters of this village. It will continue to be that way. This year, by the end of 2014, every parcel in this village will be reevaluated, reappraised as part of the six-year process. I can, I'll take money that the property appraised value, and accordingly, the property tax are going to go up. So the only way we're going to offset that trend is to get some industrial property base. This is an opportunity for the village to provide an avenue for increasing our commercial industrial property base. We don't do that. Show me a better plan. Show me the design. Show me the alternative to the same level of fidelity of design and study.
All right, that's the last speaker on my list. If there's someone who has an absolute burning desire to speak. All right, I'll take two more. Okay, three, and that's it. Can you give me your names quickly?
Sure, Matt Carson.
Matt Carson. And Mary White. And... Okay, come on up, Matt.
I'll give Community Resources that they are very effective lobbyists, and they've done a fine job of that. As for actually providing a plan for a business park, they've offered stuff that's kind of all over the place. The last I saw was a two-page document that's demonstrating that, you know, TIF prices will offset it. It's a very nice little chart with color. It's very nice. But this is not happening. You know, this is not going to happen. There's no businesses lined up. It's a farce. So I know they've been very effective at talking to council members, but you guys are making a big mistake, and you will see a referendum from this. Thank you.
Mary White.
I claim no expertise here. I'm just a villager who...
I'm just a villager who reads. And I read the fiscal impact report, which was really promising, looked terrific, amazing work, went into that, and the very last page was a chart of tax rates. And I noted that the commercial industrial tax rate for Yellow Springs is, if not as high as it gets in the region, second or third from the top rate in the region. I'm just flimsy as to why a business would want to come here, especially if they know that what we want is their tax revenues. I would think any business that wants to set up shop miles from the interstate, miles from an urban area, will want abatement, will want incentives, and that defeats the purpose. I'm, that's my question, I just don't understand the motivation for a business to come here. And we have not been successful in the 10 years this thing, roughly, that this thing has been talked about. We haven't been successful yet in recruiting a business that's eager to come. So, I'm wondering what the impact of those high tax rates is and if that's going to be a limiting factor.
All right. Lori Miller?
Hello. My name is Lori Miller. I live in the village. I have several questions. It's my understanding that the CR borrowed $300,000 in 2003 to purchase 44 acres of land at zero interest. Is CR required to pay back that loan? And if so, when? And secondly, I have personally waffled back and forth about whether I was pro-issue, pro-funding of the CBE or not. And over time, the biggest problem that I have is what appears to be improprieties and perhaps a level of conflict of interest by members who are, whose job it is to vote thumbs up or thumbs down on this ordinance. I think that several of the council members, one who has now recruited herself, that you have ties to Community Resources. And so, I'd like to ask you if you could just kind of speak out officially as to what your previous contact, whether you've been a board member of Community Resources or not, and just, just so that this is out and very open and very transparent. And also, if somebody could speak to whether Judy Hemfling, also, who was a previous council member, was involved with Community Resources as well. Thank you.
Okay. One more comment? All right, go ahead, quick.
Hi, I'm Anna McClure. Thank you for the last comment. My name's Anna McClure. As many of you know, I have a daughter who is, was born with a physical handicap. And what I have seen with her life has just amazed me and turned my life around. She finds other ways for how to do things that we take for granted every single day. She was born with no fingers. They were all fused together. Through pain, several painstaking surgeries, she has learned to use her fingers little by little. And what I can say about our village, that I've seen in the past seven, almost eight years that I've lived here now, is immense passion for the people who live here, intense creativity, very intelligent people. And I am absolutely sure, without a doubt, I can bet more than what is, whatever this money dollar amount is worth, that we can find another way to learn how to live unless, be creative, pull ourselves together here and out of the dollars, and think about truly how we can make this work for the greater, higher good of the village and all the people here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, that being the last comment that I see, I'm going to close the public hearing and take it back to council table. I think it would be good to address the issue of conflict of interest first and foremost. And I'm not going to speak to Karen's issue, I think maybe Kent can say a few words on that. But I will say that, because I saw the article that I think a lot of this is coming from, is an article by Jerry Bello that was published in the Free Press, and I was kind of appalled by it because it's really full of lots of half-truths and distortions. Judy Hemfling actually opposes the funding of the CR. And she was council's watchdog or liaison to the CR. She was a non-voting member. That was us serving as a watchdog function to this entity. So, to accuse her of having some kind of impropriety is just appalling. It's really appalling journalism, and so I'm really, I'm quite upset about that story. When we appointed people to the CR, they were there to serve as watchdogs. They were not board members, they did not have vote. The other thing to remember is that the CR is volunteers and it is a nonprofit entity. They get nothing from it, and they are doing it, I believe in good faith, because they believe that this will be good for the village. They have no financial stake in it. And if I'm wrong, I would love somebody to correct me, but that is, everything on the book says that. So, and I speak as somebody who has voted against going forward with bond funding, so I'm not saying this is some kind of cover-up, but I really don't like people spreading scary mistruths about good people. Do you want to speak more to Karen's?
I think Karen is being very, very cautious, more than I think is warranted. The connection between her husband's appointment several years ago to a position that's never served any function or done any work or gained any money, I think is irrelevant, but that's just my take on it.
Can you maybe take a step back and just walk through the details? Because it got mentioned by about four people, so if you can walk through...
I'm not sure how familiar I am with it. They created, they created an entity, as I understand it, to oversee the covenants and named Ted Donnell's company, his employer, as the organization to do the administration. And Ted left that company, but his name was still there on the record as the person to oversee the covenants for end-users of the property. But there haven't been any end-users, there's, you know...
And he's not employed by the company anymore?
Not employed by the company anymore, no.
So, all right. Okay.
I guess I probably shouldn't respond too. Yes, I was a member of CR. I was approached by some members of the CR board when I retired from Wright-Patterson after 30 years with a background in finance and cost estimating. As soon as I decided to run for council, I resigned from the board. So, my exposure to CR was very limited. I am now the council's liaison to CR, and I'm learning more. But from a financial standpoint, one of my concerns when I asked them, I said, you know, what is the organization? It's an organization of volunteers. So, I did not join CR for any personal gains, but I left CR so that there would not be that shadow of a conflict of interest if I was elected to council. So, I don't read Facebook and so forth, so I haven't heard any concerns, any innuendos or so forth. So, that's, that's my short-life story of my involvement with CR.
I have no affiliation with Community Resources, but I did want to mention, somebody referenced that I work for the Chamber, and so I did want to clarify that. I stopped working for the Chamber in October. I worked for the Chamber for four months, and actually, I was the visitor center greeter guy. I had no role in promoting commerce through the Chamber or anything like that, so, yeah, I don't think there's any conflict at all.
I think Yellow Springs has about 100 nonprofit organizations, and I'm not sure how many of those organizations have boards. Regardless of whether they have boards or not, all nonprofit organizations, and all the ones that I'm aware of in Yellow Springs, exist for the good of the community. That's why they exist. I've been on the board of, oh, six or eight nonprofits. The Children's Center, the Senior Center, the Village Mediation Program, Home, Inc. I was a founding board member of Community Resources. I've had a lot of experience with public, in my role with Home, Inc., both as a board member and as the director, anyone who's been in the community very long knows that there was a lot of resistance to public funding of, or donation of land by the community to Home, Inc. And during that time, I never understood why there seemed to be some sense that Home, Inc. existed for itself. I didn't get it. Home, Inc. existed for the good of the community and to provide a stock of affordable housing. Community Resources was started by volunteers in the community, people who through the last, whatever it is, 15 years, I guess, have donated their time to that organization for the good of the community. None of the volunteers have made any money, and probably some of them have donated some of their money. I'm very concerned that, you know, we're a village of under 4,000 people, and yet we allow ourselves to get into this suspicion of other groups because we don't, we think whatever, we don't like what they're doing, or maybe we think they're doing it the wrong way. But frankly, I mean, I have never met anyone in this community who is, who I think has been trying to get money out of something that they're doing, and I've met a whole lot of people who've given a whole lot of their money for the community. So, I would, I mean, I really would like it if at least we could set that aside. We can have our differences, and that's what makes us strong. But when we start vilifying people who disagree with us, we're just going down the tubes. I just, and I have other things to say about the CBE. Do we have time or are we not?
Well, I have one other thing to say. Not only did I get off of the board of CR, I was part of the James A. McKee Group that I got off of, and I also got off the session at my church, because I am concerned about people thinking you have ulterior motives or some other objectives. So, I tried to make myself as clean as possible, that I wasn't being influenced by another group. And myself, I think that's important of an elected official. There are ties that you'd like to keep, but I feel it's important that you break those ties so that you can unbiasedly represent the whole community. And that's what I feel the job of a council member is, is to unbiasedly represent the whole community.
Did you want to continue? We can, we can just kind of go around then on the CBE question more generally, I think, and so we'll go. Because remember, we do have two more meetings to go through this, so if you feel you've got something more to say, do feel free to write us in the meantime or come to our next meeting and speak.
Well, I think that this topic, the Center for Business and Education and the funding of it, is a dense topic. It has a long history, at least 20 years. I've been reading the past 20 years of documents, of village plans and other documents, and the idea of doing this is a long period of time. And during that period of time, there has always been a certain amount of opposition to it, as well as trying to promote it. I'm in the process of writing something. I thought I'd get it written by the end of the day, but I won't. And I have probably, most of my waking hours for the past, how many weeks we've been doing this, I don't know, several weeks has been spent thinking about this, talking to people and reading about it. And when I'm approaching it, I'm informed by my work with community service and the work of Arthur Morgan and the importance of having a diverse local economy. I'm also very concerned about sustainability and having Yellow Springs be a sustainable small community. I also did work on the zoning, the new zoning code, and from that work and my work with Home, Inc., I know something about the time and the difficulties in doing any kind of development on land, and I'm pretty informed about the different properties in Yellow Springs and which ones are available for commercial activity or are residential. And there's not a lot. And I'm also happy to look at compromises, if there's some kind of compromise that seems like it's really going to move something forward and also satisfy differing interests. So, when I've listened to people talk, I'm not going to say, repeat everything people said, but most of the people who talked tonight are opposed to, at least opposed to, the public funding of the CBE, and some are opposed to the CBE itself, I think. There were some things about no businesses being lined up, and I think that it's probably, I'm not looking at it as having businesses lined up, so I'd like to just sort of run through a little bit of how I'm looking at it so far. First of all, I'm saying to myself, does Yellow Springs need a more vibrant economy? I would answer yes to that. Do we have the ability to generate a more vibrant economy? I believe we do. Just like someone said, we have a lot of passionate and creative people here, and I believe we can generate more economic activity. And that's my interest primarily. I'm not interested in trying to get someone to come into Yellow Springs. If a business wants to come in, that's great, but I'm most interested in having a place where local people, whether it's a high school student who manages to figure out something, you know, in his bedroom, or someone who's working in their garage, or an Antioch College student, or an Antioch University Midwest, or whomever, I'm particularly interested in the kind of businesses that we can grow, including the kind of things they're doing in Athens, Ohio, food to product, food product, growing food, food product. So, then, another question, does it make sense for us to have a place for businesses to grow? I think it does. Otherwise, if we're, if we are generating businesses and they get to a certain size, they will leave, as they have been doing. I think there are probably three or four that have left over the past 10 or 15 years that probably would have stayed had they had a place to stay. Is it legitimate for the village government to have any, provide any kind of resources to a local economy? Well, I look at this the same way I look at housing. If it's going to support the community to provide money, personnel, land, whatever, I think it's legitimate for our government to make that investment. And I think it's legitimate for our government to make an investment in housing, particularly affordable housing, and as we have done, to make an investment in preserving farmland and natural resources around the village. Do we have the capacity to do this? Because the CBE will involve, it really is a game changer if we do this. It's a, it's a game changer for the village government, and it's a game changer for Community Resources. I do think we have the capacity, because I think we, like people say, we have passion... we have passion, we have intelligence, we have creativity. People love Yellow Springs. Do we have the political will? I don't know. At this point, that's where I am. Do we have the political will? I'm not sure about that, because there's so much opposition. And that's sort of where I am right now.
One of the things I've said from the beginning is that it's important to me to have all the data that we can get to make this decision. And so one thing that is important to me is, and I think Margaret spoke to this, is that we don't know what those bids are going to look like. There are plenty of folks out there who are experts, some of them are in this room, who have emphasized that those bids could come well below what we're looking at. And I think that's important, to see that information before we make a final decision. I would not support it if it was well over what we're looking at in terms of what we have to invest. So I think that's important, that we get all the data. A couple of other things that I do want to mention, and similar to Mary Ann, and I think everybody on council, we've all been speaking to lots of folks, and I've been impressed with the discussions on both sides. There are lots of folks with knowledge coming forward. Again, many of those folks are in this room and have not spoken today. There's a very interesting piece from John Eastman that was in the packet, which I'd love to hear more about his thoughts on. But, you know, there are definitely experts out there that have emphasized, you know, part of the reason why private developers do not come forward is because they need to get short-term payback on those projects. Right now, municipalities are doing this all over because municipalities are able to get the funding to make these things happen. Similarly, the issue about the comprehensive plan, and I guess I also thought we were going to see the petition tonight that has been, that has been passed around. But, you know, I have seen the sort of three arguments that have been highlighted. The majority of folks that I have talked to that drafted the comprehensive plan do not support the conclusion that's being made that developers must pay for development. The village can be a developer. There are different ways to look at that. And if you read that entire document, it's basically contradictory, I think, to conclude that. Designated CIC was the second of the three points mentioned for opposing the CBE. And in fact, this is something that's being discussed right now. Nobody on Community Resources has said that they're opposed to designation, and that really becomes part of the work for council in the community to look at what would we be designated, designating an organization to do. And I love the idea of looking at economic development overall. If we have more individuals at the CBE, how does that then impact where people, for example, park downtown? How does that impact how we build infrastructure within the downtown area as well? I guess the only other thing that I do want to say is, I'm not opposed to a referendum happening. And I think if that is the direction that we go, that's great. I'm all about the democratic process. One thing that does concern me, though, is that I think it does send out a signal that makes the village not look that supportive of economic development in general. So I would love to see us be able to talk more about potential compromises, which many people have also brought to the table, if those make sense. But at the end of the day, I think it makes a lot of sense to really know what numbers we're dealing with to decide what kind of investment we're actually making as a village.
Do you have anything more to say, Jerry?
No, other than my number's in the book. And so far, no one's called me. They've sent letters to council as a whole. I've been on the phone calling people because I'm saying, you know, almost 1,000 people voted for me when I ran for election. So, you know, trying to get their thoughts and so forth. But feel free to look my number up and give me a call. I'd rather spend the time away from here talking to you than taking away from the public time to deal with all the issues we have to deal with. But give me a call.
Well, I wrote a long letter. I think I've made my position clear. I support the people who are working on this. I think they're doing good. They are, they believe in what they're doing, and they're doing it out of a belief in the good of the community. I am looking at it primarily as a business decision at this point in time. And $82,000 a year is a small percentage of our budget, but it's actually a very good salary. There's a lot of things that you can't do when you commit that kind of money to this particular project. Particularly, I think, the tipping point was the development of the Creative Memory Site across the street, the selling of that, and the fact that they are willing to build new space on that property after they've filled the current space. That's ready to build, that involves no government involvement. And that's a significant competition. So as a business decision, that is why I have said that I will vote against the bond issues. But I do not believe there's been people acting with a lack of integrity on this issue, and I want to make that very clear. I really, fully respect Karen. I don't think, I don't believe she was acting outside of her integrity. And as soon as she became aware of this old document, she acted in an excess of caution, and I'm sad that she's not here to be a part of this discussion. Okay. So Judy, do you want to call the vote?
Do we have a motion?
Did we get a motion? I'm sorry, I'm kind of, sometimes when I get called to pinch hit, I leave out the vital detail. Yes.
So if we're calling the vote now, then we're going to call it two other times?
Yep. Yeah, and you don't, I mean, you have a whole boatload of options. You don't have to call a vote. You can vote simply to move it to the next reading. I would say the reason to call the vote is to give folks an indication of kind of where you're going, which you basically just did. You have a lot of options in this regard. I can go either way. I've made it clear, very clear where I'm planning to vote. Is there a feeling on council, one way or another, about voting or not voting? Voting three times just gives the community a clearer sense of where we are.
And also, just to be clear, you could all vote no, and it would still go to the second reading, it would still go to the third reading. So it's going to proceed regardless.
Oh.
Because this is not a final vote.
Is this a point-of-order kind of question? Jim?
It's a question as to whether there can or will be a referendum. Is that a point-of-order?
I am not in a position to answer that question myself, and I'm not sure that anybody up here has looked into it.
I mean, I can speak to it. I've spoken with the Board of Election folks a number of times. It wouldn't make a difference, because you cannot begin your proceedings to start the referendum until you have a final vote on the ordinance. So there's, I mean, it snowed, and the meeting was delayed. And so therefore, it simply can't happen before February 3rd. It's not possible. But then at that point, those folks who want to bring the referendum, get a lawyer to compose the language, and then circulate that petition, and then it comes back to council. And then council delivers it to the Board of Elections, who certifies the vote count to assure that it's enough voters. And if it is, then there's a referendum. And if there is not, then it is not.
And is there a time deadline on that for, say, May of this year? Is that, is that the concern, that it wouldn't come in time for the May election period? Is that what you're wondering?
My concern is a pretty simple one. I would just like villagers, all villagers, to have a chance to express themselves by voting for or against the proposition. I hesitate to be enthusiastic about having council vote for it and then hope and wish that perhaps sometime in the future we can have a referendum about that same subject.
Well, I hear what you're saying.
Let me respond to Mr. Rose, if I might. Let me respond to you. I don't think there's anything that would prohibit the council from putting the matter on the ballot if they wished to do that. But if they elect to take their own initiative and adopt the measure, then citizens can put it up for a vote at their, at their option. You go out and you collect names on a petition, on a petition. You deliver it to the Board of Elections, and it ends up on the ballot for people to vote on. So it can happen a couple of different ways.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to bring it back to council. All right, quick sues.
I have a point-of-order question. If there is a successful referendum petition, until the vote is actually taking place, does the legislation, say you pass it, does it go forward or does everything come to a stop until the referendum question is settled?
Yeah, my understanding is it freezes everything, is it?
That's my understanding.
What is your understanding?
That it freezes everything.
Then in that case, the referendum would change the possible timeline.
Oh, yes.
And people should know that.
Yeah. Yeah, referendum, I think, given the current market, would cost us more. If, let's say, let's say people initiated a referendum to, let's say council said yes, the public initiated a referendum, the referendum said yes, also, it would simply delay it and raise the cost.
All right. So is that clear? Do you understand what he was arguing? Okay. All right, so back to table. We can vote now, or we can vote to table till the next meeting. Either way, the final vote will take place on February 3rd. The question is whether we're going to have three votes, one tonight, one next meeting, and one on February 3rd, or if we're just going to table and have our two votes on the next meeting and on February 3rd. To me, it makes no difference.
You also have the option not to table. If you table it, it gets kind of fraught, I might just mention.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can simply vote to move it to the next meeting. You are not voting it up or down. You're simply voting that, yes, we want to bring it to the next meeting. And in fact, you would not have to vote on it at that next meeting because that vote is not binding. The final vote is the binding vote.
Right. I'd like to suggest that we move it to the next meeting. I mean, I'm willing to say, at this point, I'm still supporting the CBE. Maybe next week I wouldn't be, but...
Okay.
And I'm inclined to say, let's go ahead and take the vote so that folks know what we're saying. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and take a vote on the first reading.
I'll second the motion. Okay, so let's take a vote on this motion that we vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Need to do it by roll call.
Oh, sorry.
Sims?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Askland?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to vote. All right, so now we are voting on the actual ordinance for bond. This is supporting bond council and the issuance of, and sale of bonds in the not to exceed the amount of $995,000 for the purpose of paying for a portion of the costs of acquiring and construction certain permanent infrastructure and roadway improvement in the village, together with necessary appurtenance thereto, authorizing the bond registrar agreement and a bond purchase agreement for the Center for Business and Education. So you want to call the roll on that?
Yes. Housh?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Askland?
No.
So I'm going to suggest that we take a brief break, because I think people may be desiring to leave, and my water bottle is empty. So we're going to break for a few minutes, and we're going to then bring Karen back in. And I thank you for your attendance and participation.
Okay, that's just the beginning of the legislation. Everybody, please take your seats.
And a reminder, we're not allowed to shut that door, so if you could, if you want to have conversations, please just go downstairs.
Oh, I'm getting a really interesting echo.
Did you hear that? We've got feedback going on.
So yeah, just go downstairs and have as much conversation as you want.
Okay. Resolution 2014-02, adopting council rules and procedures.
Okay, whereas the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, calls for council to adopt rules and procedures governing its meetings, now therefore the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, hereby resolves that. Section 1, the attached rules and procedures are adopted. Section 2, these rules and procedures shall take effect at the earliest date permitted by law.
Thank you, Judy. I did find a few minor things that I thought we needed to correct. First, on the third page, up at the top, number 12, standing reports, it says, "Second Monday only." I thought it would probably be better to say, "Second meeting only," and put that in parentheses, since sometimes our meetings aren't on Mondays. Down under recess, I think Lori requested, and I concur that we take a recess. We can take a recess after two hours, rather than two and a half hours. Or an hour and 45 minutes.
45 minutes!
When the room is 80 degrees.
Yes, when the room is 80 degrees, and somebody's recused, and we've got half the people, yeah.
But this says, but this says when the regular meeting as a whole is beyond two and a half hours, right?
Right, but normally, yeah.
But maybe two hours instead.
And it does say especially, so it's not like it says we're not allowed to take one at hour 45. So we haven't broken any rules here.
And then decorum is in there twice. The, I think the second paragraph on decorum was left over from the old one. We moved it and changed it. So if you would just eliminate the second paragraph on decorum, I think that that will do it, unless anybody else had any comments. Anybody have a motion?
So move that we accept Resolution 2014-02.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is Resolution 2014-03, approving a bid for lease of village-owned farmland.
Okay, whereas the Village of Yellow Springs owns a certain amount of rural property, which it traditionally leases to farmers for agricultural uses, and whereas the lease on the property, known as the Glass Farm, has recently expired and the immediate past tenant has expressed an interest in renewing that lease, and whereas the village manager, having given public notice, conducted an open public process to solicit competitive offers for a new lease of the subject property, and thereby having identified the maker of the highest and best bid for said lease, now therefore the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs does hereby resolve that. Section 1, it hereby accepts the offer of Kent Oberstlake, bidding on behalf of Flatter Hereford Farms Incorporated, of $125 per acre per year for the 29 tillable acres of the Glass Farm. Section 2, the lease shall run for a period of three years, 2014, 15, and 16, and be subject to the terms defined in the announcement request for bids. Section 3, the village manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute a lease agreement with the successful bidder on behalf of the village. Section 4, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon approval by council.
Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Kent, would you please review this a bit?
Well, this is a huge step forward. The first shock I got when I moved here in 1979 was I got a call from a farmer telling me I had 5,000 bushels of corn in an elevator somewhere. It was my share.
Share crop!
So that was an education. And I went through several other missteps, but we've gotten a pretty sophisticated bidding process, I think. The advantage of an auction over a sealed bid is that many times the current leaseholder likes to retain their hold on the land because they've invested in improving the soil. They put in fertilizers, lime, and drainage improvements, and that kind of thing. And so, so an open auction lets them decide when they can keep going and when they need to drop out. Anyway, and then the Flatters have been very good tenants. They also farm the Sutton Farm. So this makes the two leases terminated at the same time, and we can go through the whole thing three years from now.
Okay, great. Thank you, any...
Yeah. Is 125 per acre per year, is that about standard, do you know?
It's somewhere in there, yeah. It's somewhere in there, yeah. We're getting 100. I've been told that it's common now to get 150, but it depends on a lot of circumstances, the, you know, how good the land, the soil is and so on. So we got a $25 an acre a year increase. Might still go higher.
Any questions from citizens? I will call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The next ordinance is 2014, excuse me, Resolution 2014-4, authorizing the interim village manager to contract with management partners for consulting services.
Okay, whereas the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs seeks a thorough, inclusive, and exhaustive process for the search for a village manager, and whereas Management Partner Incorporated's interview references and endorsements appear to bear out that firm's ability to provide such process to the Village of Yellow Springs, and whereas Management Partner Incorporated its proposal states its ability to complete the search process in collaboration with council, the interim village manager, hiring committee, and citizen participants within about 100 days, and whereas the estimated cost for the entirety of the project is quoted at $19,500, which is both reasonable and consistent, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio that. Section 1, the village manager is authorized to execute a contract with Management Partners Incorporated for the purpose of hiring Cecil Osborne, a qualified individual suited to the position and to the village. Section 2, this resolution shall go into effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Kent, I mean, did you draw up, I'm not sure whether I should have Brian or...
Brian wrote the resolution, didn't he?
Judy wrote it and we...
Oh, Judy wrote, okay.
But we looked at it together. I mean, I think we've highlighted all the important reasons to get support on the village manager search, and we're all really excited about working with Cecil Osborne. I think I mentioned before that his daughter went to Andiott College in the 90s. He's very familiar with Yellow Springs, and that's why we wanted that caveat which Mary Ann mentioned, that, you know, he is our principal consultant on this. Not really related to the vote, but I did want to say that we're now working out the process, and so citizens that have expressed interest in participating in this process will be hearing from us soon, and there's still time to express your interest if you have that.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Comments from citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next resolution is 2014-5, certifying to the Ohio Public Works Commission that funds for the village share of the cost of a water system loop completion project are available and committed.
Now, if you like, I can read only the section which was added to this resolution which was passed in 2013. It lacked one section that the OPWC required.
That would be fine, yeah.
Okay, so the section that was added was Section 5, the interim village manager is authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary and appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance.
Then should the next one be Section 6?
Sure should.
And I'd like to make an editorial comment. It shouldn't be, just be the village manager because there's a reasonable odds that I won't be here to sign the contract.
Okay. You're a hopeful guy.
I am.
Thank you. Judy, can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
This is a project that was presented by Laura before she left. It's for, to add a loop, add new water lines down in the area of Andiott College, Livermore. It starts off of Corey, so it's a very important project to improve fire flow at Andiott College and that area. And I believe that there actually, there will be some benefits to downtown also. We submitted a request for a grant from OPWC, Ohio Public Works Commission. They're looking upon it very favorably and, which we're very excited about because it's half of the cost, it's about half of the cost of the project. But as Judy said, we were missing basically the language that says we actually have the money and have appropriated the money. So that is really the only thing we're doing. We've actually already approved this. So, any questions or comments, citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're all saying aye, very, with conviction. I like that.
Not like last time.
Yeah. Reading of Resolution 2014-6, approving a cost of living increase for 2014 for village employees.
Whereas the village manager annually reviews pay rates for employees of the village and recommends changes in those rates as needed to village council, and whereas during the preceding 12-month period, the Consumer Price Index as calculated by the United States Department of Commerce has increased by approximately 1.24%, and whereas a survey of intended changes by other municipalities in the Miami Valley region reveals that they anticipate making adjustments in their pay scales ranging from 0 to 3% with a weighted average of 1.34%. And whereas having assessed the state of village finances to evaluate Yellow Springs' capacity to support higher wages for its staff and the history of similar adjustments in the recent past, the village manager is recommending that pay rates for employees be increased by 1.34% for the calendar year 2014. Now therefore, the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, pay scales for village employees shall be adjusted by increasing them by 1. 34% across the board. Section 2, this increase shall be applied and be in effect on or on and after January 13th, 2014. Section 3, those employees directly appointed by elected officials, clerk of courts, clerk of council, solicitor, treasurer, treasurer, and village manager will not have this change applied to their wages unless such pay adjustment is stipulated in their employment agreement. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon adoption.
Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Kent, please.
I want to thank Lori because one of her constituents pointed out an error in my original version. This is a second revised, this is a revised version. It's just a history lesson. We have a payroll clerk, and doing this, I called her and I said, "Do you know what the cost of living change has been over the last year?" And she said, "I can tell you," and she called back shortly and said it was 7/10 of a percent. And so that was part of my rationale for writing the first version. And then one of Lori's constituents said, "Oh, no, no, it was 1.24%." And so I went and I said, "How did you come up with 7/10%?" "Well, I have this formula that we've used, and it's one I developed probably 25 years ago. It says we pass through 2/3 of the change in the cost of living." So she multiplied 1.24% by 2/3 and got 7/10 of a percent. So, anyway, but in 2010, we changed our policy, and nobody ever told the payroll clerk that she should change the way she computed cost of living. So, sort of interesting.
So I guess I have a question, though. Have the employees been getting the correct increases?
Well, every year you get a recommendation from the manager, and I can't tell you, those, they just give you a figure. They don't tell you their thinking. Mine did. The earlier resolutions just said, "We're gonna do this." So I don't know whether they underestimated the...
We had a long conversation about this a few years ago, and I think, well, it was probably 2010.
And this one changed.
And it was about how to calculate it. But in all cases, we don't just look at the CPI, but we also look at what our other municipalities do. We did a comparison of unionized and non-unionized, and we generally speaking have given pay rates that's pretty, that's basically right in the middle or sometimes more generous than what other regional employers and municipalities are doing, so.
I agree with that policy.
This is the list of cities we surveyed.
But I guess, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, I guess what I'm hearing from Kent is that even though that was our policy, it doesn't sound like our payroll clerk was implementing our policy and our intent. So I wonder...
It's just how she was calculating.
This particular one?
No, let me explain. When I worked here, we went through a period of very high inflation, and council agreed that every three months, we would adjust employee pay because inflation was like 15% a year.
Right.
That every three months, we would look at the most recent three months' change in the Consumer Price Index, and we would pass through 2/3 of that automatically. So, and that's what they were doing, but then in 2010, they stopped that, and then they went to a once-a-year adjustment determined by council. There was no formula involved.
Right.
Okay, so no, she, there's no miscalculation, there's no...
Okay, just, so they're, okay, I'll just drop it. I'm hearing from you, everything's fine. Any other comments from council? Comments from citizens? Sue?
I certainly support this legislation to raise the staff cost of living increase. I just wanted to point out that us old duffers on social security got a 1%.
Yeah.
So when you, when you are dealing with issues of finance and proposed taxes and things like that, you have to, I hope, keep in mind that a good bit of this population is dependent on income which is dwindling or stable or static, and so the burden of an increasing village cost of living is felt pretty heavily. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one factor I haven't mentioned is we've had to recruit recently for several, we've been interviewing for police officers, we're interviewing for electric crew members. Three of the four members of our electric crew are retiring. We recruited recently for finance director. Frankly, I've been stunned at how good the quality is of the applicants, but where I would have expected to get 20 or 30 or 50 applicants for those jobs, we're getting four, five, or six. And we've been very fortunate to get good applicants, so it may be a non-issue. But I question, and I'm not, I don't know because I haven't had enough experience, but I think our pay rates are becoming uncompetitive.
Uncompetitive.
Uncompetitive, yeah. That's my impression.
Okay.
Thank you, Kent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Finally, Resolution 2014-07, certifying availability of village matching funds for community development block grant.
Whereas the village in cooperation with the Green County Department of Development has requested a grant to upgrade the sidewalk ramps at several intersections to meet current ADA requirements, and whereas that grant request has been approved, now therefore the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the Village of Yellow Springs gratefully acknowledges the grant award and reaffirms its intent to complete the project. Section 2, we certify that the local share of matching funds in the amount of $2,200 is available and dedicated for the execution of this project. Section 3, the village manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute any contracts or other documents related to this undertaking on behalf of the village.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. This is basically the same scenario as the previous one that we did. We're just certifying the money. This is, I think, a grant of about $30,000 from Green County Department of Development. It's community development block grant money specifically for handicap sidewalk, handicap ramp. So, again, it's, we put $2,200 into it and we're simply certifying that that money is available and dedicated to the project. Council questions? Citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're on to the part of the agenda where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. Paul?
The last council spent a lot of time and I assume a lot of money on a lawsuit against one of our builders in the area, and I was wondering if this council is going to continue to pursue that track or not.
I mean, I, we can only, we can only respond under the advice of our attorney, and we haven't talked to him, so I, we just won't be responding at that point. We can, something we can bring up later.
Tell you about the former K-HO property?
He's talking about, right, the strewing issue, which I recuse myself whenever we discuss it publicly, so.
We can, it's, it could be time, I know that something has gone, there's, I think that there's been a response. It's in appeal now, so I think that it could be time for us to get a, kind of a status report from the attorney. So Judy, could you, or Kent, could you mention that to Chris if we could get a status report? And anything else? I'm sorry, anything else? Okay. Now we're going on to special reports, and we have Chief Anthony Pettiford here. He's, has some things going on with the police department that he wants to talk about. Come on up, Tony.
I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we're gonna be working on in 2014. As Mr. Bristol said, we are finishing up our process for interviewing a police officer. We have some really good candidates. It's gonna be a little bit tough picking from the ones we have. We have a lot of experience that wants to come to Yellow Springs and join our department, so we're trying to finish that up. Next week, we'll also be starting our interviews with our part-time dispatcher positions. The, our current records management system is New World, and with that system, we haven't really been utilizing that system to its fullest. Right now, we're working with our IT department and trying to push a lot of information to the cars so we can keep our officers on the street, they'll be able to do reports inside of the car and push it back to the building. So that kind of keeps them out of the building and more onto the streets. So we're gonna be working with IT to work on those portals and talk more with the Xena Communication Center. We also are gonna continue to work with our schools. We're working on one major project, which is called Safety Town. This is a program for children that teaches safety about fire, pedestrian traffic, guns, poisons, drugs, and who is it safe to talk to in public. The name Safety Town, what we're gonna do is build a replica of Yellow Springs. This is more geared to our kindergarten and first graders, so we'll build this replica of Yellow Springs and teach them the safety rules and how to maneuver around town. So we want to start at a younger age and work up into our first graders. Officer Brian Carlson has put a lot of work into this program. He's been working with Mills Lawn. We think for the first year, we're going to stick with the walking to school, the crossing the streets, obeying traffic laws, safety when riding bikes, and also who is it safe to talk to if you need help. So those are our major topics that we'll be working on this summer. And with the high school, I just met with two of our seniors in the school, and we have came up, we've come up with where either myself will come out to the high school and we'll meet with a, like a body of leaders in the high school, and they'll get to talk to the police or talk to officers and be able to tell us what's going on in the school, and we'll kind of tell them what we're looking for and open up those communications with the high school. So we'll be working on that project. We'll continue to push for a website for the police department. That's gonna be where, when you go to the village website, you'll hit the police department and you'll open up a full page with the police. We feel that that is where we can get a lot of information pushed out to the public. You'll click on that website, you'll have tabs to where you can go to, so any information or how to go about filing reports, how to get with us, will be on that website. And with that being said, we've also implemented a tip line to where if somebody does not want to actually come in and physically talk to us, they will be able to call this number anonymously, leave information on there, and every tip that we get, we will follow up on. So that is in place. We've tested it and it's up and running, but now we just have to get that information pushed out. This is gonna be ongoing. We are still working with our policy and procedures. My goal is to work under a professional accreditation procedures that's called CALEA, and CALEA stands for Commission for Accreditation for Law Enforcement Association. And these are just high professional standards with policy and procedures that will be held for our department. We'd like to put that in place and at some point in the future, look at it being accredited professional department, so. And finally... So, um, and finally, um, we will continue our training of our officers. Um, this is also a major standard, and with CLEA. Um, training has always been a priority for me, and to make sure our officers continue training, uh, receive training and information, uh, to better handle any type of call that they cope on. You know, some of that training is our firearms, our CPR, our criminal law updates, um, and this is provided by the Green County Prosecutor's Office at least twice a year. Uh, we also work with our active shooter and our, um, critical incident training, our CIT training. So, those are just some of the highlights and things that we're gonna be working on in, in 14.
Um, with the training, is there, um, is there any planned training? I know that there are programs related to mental health. Are there, is that part of, um, training that they will be receiving?
We have schedules, um, the, I think the next one for Green County is not until this summer, but there are area, other counties that are hosting it. Uh, we have reached out and offered to host that training, NAMI, here, um, at the building. We have not received, uh, on word if we can get that into, uh, into the village, um, anytime this year, but we have put that offer out.
Yeah, when, when he mentioned CIT, critical incident-
Is that, okay, that's-
Yeah, that is.
Um, and, and can you briefly talk about the status of the, of the Marx radios? I understand that they're operational and that they're doing very well.
They're doing very well.
Could you explain that? Explain what's the difference?
Yeah, we, um, you know, we had a, a basic radio system that the village has used for, for, for years, and we updated to the Marx, which is a state-run, um, radio system. So, where we were pretty much limited to the village, we can now pretty much talk statewide, um, on portable radios. So, uh, this is, uh, this is a state-of-the-art system. This has been in the works for two to three years, um, and we finally got it in place. Um, actually, the interoperability of departments came into play when we had the pole that was snapped and we lost power on December 13th. And actually, we are writing a letter that Columbus has requested, really telling how that interoperability of being able to talk within departments when our phone lines were jammed up, uh, we were not able to call out, calls were coming in, but we couldn't even call out. But the way departments were able to get, get on the same channel and talk to each other was a major, uh, a major thing that we haven't been able to do in this area for a long time. So, I'm actually writing that letter for, to Columbus 'cause they wanna know about that and know that it works.
So, for the tip line, is, can citizens find that number somewhere now?
Right, we just tested it, we got it up and running, and now we have to, we're gonna try to push it on the websites.
Okay.
Um, and get that information out. And hopefully, when we get that website up, that'll be one of the tabs that you can go right on there, click on that and get that information and be able to call in.
Right.
I have a question about that, too. Are, when people call, are they talking to someone or are they leaving a message?
Just leaving a message.
And I just have some concern that it could be abused, you know, that people could use it to harass people. Do you, I mean, is this something that exists in other communities?
Yeah, it, you know, it all depends on how it's used. We hope that it's, it's not used for those purposes, um, but we, we'll be able to screen it if there's something on there that's not for information or wise, or it's just, uh, we'll, we'll look into it. If it's something that needs to be looked into, we will. But if this is something that, there's, there's nothing there that needs to be handled, uh, we'll just go to the next one. But they will all be reviewed.
Also, you said that you're going to be working on some policies and procedures to be accredited?
Well, it's, uh, it's professional accreditation with law enforcement, it's just higher standards that are held. So, some, for your larger departments, the, the standards are more, for our size, our size department, we're probably looking at 20 standards.
And can you give an example of what kind of standard?
Operational standards, um, how we, how we handle our reports, how we, um, um, report, um, calls, how our evidence room is, is conducted, how we, how we run it and how we collect evidence. So, it's just standards on our day-to-day operation, but we're held to a higher standard on a professional level.
It's a very ambitious goal.
Yeah. But we have a, we have a very good department, and I think that is one of the goals that we're gonna shoot for and get on to that level.
Mary Ann, is it your concern that people use a tip line to harass their neighbors or something?
Yeah, that just occurred to me, that, I mean, it would be easy to do, you know? Someone doesn't like someone, I, you know, call them, say that they did something that they didn't really do, and then the police come out and-
Yeah, okay.
Let's hope that doesn't happen.
One other quick question. I, I remember you mentioned that you have a Twitter account?
Yes.
What, what is that Twitter account?
My son got me hooked into the social, uh, the social media. Uh, is chief at YSPD, um, so, uh, he is teaching me how to get on there and start to, to put information on this Twitter account. Um, I have one follower so far, so-
(laughing)
We're, we're getting there, so, uh, but we're pushing that information out and, and he's kinda showing me how to get on there and, and, you know, just like when we had the power outage, we can, we can start pushing information out when we get it.
Give us the rest of my ex- wife.
So, he's trying to bring me up into that, into that level of, of social media, so.
Are, are you interested in Facebook? Um, just because we're gonna be talking about it, it's one of our, it's one of our retreat topics, and I, I just wanted to know if we would add that to the conversation, if you are.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is get somebody that's Facebook savvy, uh, within the department that can, that can maintain it and, and watch it. Um, I don't think they really want me to touch it, but they need somebody to get in there and just, and just monitor it and, and get information back to us. And it's the same thing as the Twitter, is pushing information out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Oh, any questions?
I actually have a question.
Okay.
I'm just curious about-
Can you come up?
We do need you to come up and say the name, I know it's Payne.
My name's Alyssa Meyer, and I just had a question, when you were talking about forming a group at the high school, a group of leaders, are these student leaders or are these faculty leaders? What define leaders, if you would?
We just talk about student leaders, um, people that just get a small group and be able to, to talk to them about issues that they maybe have at the school, so. It was a conversation, I had two high schoolers today, we thought it was a good idea to get the police kind of, you know, embedded out into high school and see us around, so not only just meeting, other options, we, to put these meetings at different times, so.
And, and how are you choosing these leaders?
I wouldn't, the kids are going to, they're going to themselves.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, yes.
Hello, my name is Taki, T-A-K-I, uh, last name is M-A-N-O-L-A-K-O-S. I hope that was slow enough. Uh, I thank the chief for his comments. Uh, I think, uh, everything that was mentioned is certainly a wonderful idea. I would support more training, uh, and the development of the police department along the lines of, uh, I think, the professionalism of what everyone acknowledges the highway patrol, uh, to have today. So, I think more training would certainly help in that regard. I have two specific questions that don't, uh, touch upon your specific comments, however. Um, I was looking at the mayor's report, uh, for, uh, it references, this is the October 2013 report, which is dated November 1st, and I noticed in this report that for the year through, uh, January to October, there were 510 citations filed, whereas in the comparable period for the previous year, there were 382. So, I was wondering if that was some kind of statistical anomaly, or perhaps you could comment what citations refer to, uh, or what might explain that increase. So, that's my comment to the chief, uh, or question, rather. Uh, another unrelated question was that I was looking at the council packet, uh, and I noticed an item for the retreat which mentioned, uh, a discussion of installation of security cameras, uh, and I'm not sure what that was referring to exactly.
I don't know where that was.
If somebody commented on that.
It wasn't there, but, um, it, it's in the, uh, the goals, and, uh, one of the goals that Judith Hemfling had, uh, put into place the past year was to have a policy on security cameras. So, not about installing them, but to have a policy for the village about that.
Okay.
And that really starts with council, not the police department.
So, is this just a preliminary discussion item?
Well, I don't know that we're, that it's going to be one of our goals. We haven't discussed our goals yet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tony, do you wanna respond?
I would have to, I would have to actually look at the, um, statistics that we have. It could be a number of things, uh, we handle, we have mayor's court, and then we do have, uh, Zeno municipal courts, so it all depends on how many citations actually were written into mayor's or were written into Zeno municipal. So, that could be the, the difference in number, but I would have to take a look at this, um, statistics.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thanks, Tony. Um, okay, now we're moving on to the 2014 budget schedule. That will be Melissa and Kent leading that discussion.
Okay, basically, what, um, what was done was we looked at, um, the schedule in previous years and tried to come up with something that would fit into the timeframe that we need to, uh, file the 2014 budget with the auditor, which has to be before April 1st. So, um, Judy and I had looked at the calendar to see how many more meetings there are until the 1st of April, and tried to organize it in such a way that it kind of was in line with what had been done in previous years. So, I'm open to suggestions, but this is just kind of a starting point for you all to discuss.
So, are these, I should've, I guess I should've looked, are these all regular meetings or are any of these Saturday meetings?
Um, I believe that the 24th of February was, um-
Oh, it's Monday.
Yeah, it was a fifth Monday or fourth Monday.
I think he said that. I think he said that a little bad.
Right, okay.
Last meetings.
Oh, sorry. That's me, sorry. Sorry, be used to that.
See ya. So, yeah, the 24th is the only one that's not a regularly scheduled meeting, and it was on a Monday.
Right, okay.
Something that we talked about that, that isn't on here is that last year, you folks, for some of these began the meetings at 6 o'clock with the, with the budget. Budget was 6 to 7, and then regular meeting after that, and I think some of these assume that that may be the case.
How's that working for you?
I could, I could do it, I mean, it's not always easy, but I can, if I know about it, and, um, it's kind of a special circumstance, considering that we have to get this budget done by April, I would be, I would be willing to, to come in early.
And everybody else, I, I'm kind of figuring, you retired folks are a little more flexible with your schedules, except you.
Semi-retired.
Um, I mean, I, I think, I think the schedule looks reasonable, and does anybody have any? Um, so, and then we, um, Melissa provided some, I don't know if you wanna say anything about the samples, the, kind of the, um-
Um, there's, the ones that are in color are the ones that I did, um, that I created, the, the newer versions. Um, basically, the older versions were much more detailed. Um, I planned on condensing it just into the different, um, categories within each budget, and then I would have, um, available the, the expanded version, so if anybody had a question about personnel services or about, um, any of the, um, various lines, contractual services or anything like that, um, and what went into that, I would have that expanded version available, and I would be able to answer questions at that time. But it just, it would, it would make the packet a little bit smaller, maybe 10 pages instead of like 30.
I think that sounds great. What, I mean, Lori and I have dealt with these and, and also Jerry, um, I mean, I, I think that sounds like a great idea.
If somebody wanted the expanded packet, could you make that?
I would have that available, yeah, it's all in one spreadsheet. I just hide the cells that aren't necessary for the meeting, so I, it's still all the same document.
Right. So, you could even make it available electronically in that? Well, I guess it, we usually get PDFs, but, um-
But she could turn that into a PDF.
Yeah, I can turn an Excel spreadsheet into a PDF.
Okay, great, I have no problem.
Cool. Well, good, I mean, I think this, so we've got the schedule, so we'll be at the, uh, January 21st meeting, we'll be, um, getting the capital and enterprise fund budget. So, are we starting out at 6 o'clock at that meeting?
Um, 6 o'clock on the 21st.
Which is actually a Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, that should be no problem, actually. Tuesdays are, are better for me than Mondays.
Is that okay with you, Melissa?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, will all of those meetings then start at 6? Is that the kind of thing we're thinking, basically?
I, I think that sounds like a good idea, yeah.
All righty, I'll put that in my calendar.
I don't think we, when, now when we're doing, not the 3rd and the 17th, just the, just the, um, the 3rd when we're doing the readings. I don't think we need to do those.
Right, right, right.
You're saying, you know-
At 6 o'clock. So, I don't think March 3rd or March, I'm sorry, March 3rd or March 17th, I don't think those need to be early meetings. That's just the legislation after we've already heard and discussed, um, and hopefully understood the budget.
And the 24th would be just budgets, so you'd start that early.
Right, yeah, that.
Unless you prefer it-
Yeah, unless you like it, it's early. Whatever suits.
What, what's your preference on the 24th? That's the Monday? It's, it's just a budget meeting, so we probably don't need to start at 6 o'clock.
Oh, well, then probably 7 would be better for me.
7, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that's a Monday, so 7 is better for me.
Right, okay, so, so, just, I'll review this. January 21st, February 3rd, and February 18th, we will begin at 6 o'clock with budget discussions. February 24th is a special meeting on the 4th Monday, just about the budget, that will start at 7 o'clock. March 3rd and March 17th. March 3rd is the first reading, March 17th is the second reading. We are going to be reading this as an emergency, but we will do two readings as an emergency, it will go into effect immediately. Um, and obviously, because of this, um, tight schedule, we, we will have to hear it as an emergency, um, so that she can get the budget filed before 2000, or before April 1st of 2014, so. But those two, March 3rd and March 17th, will be regular meetings, we'll hear the legislation during the regular part of the meeting.
And of course, because it's an emergency, that means we have to have four votes, we have to have a super majority, four votes rather than three to pass it. Usually, that's not a problem, we've talked about it so much, um, but just something to be aware of.
That's the two meetings in March.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I'm saying that because I just realized that I scheduled a trip, and I didn't realize we were meeting on the 18th. I thought we were meeting on the 17th, so I, I won't be here. I mean, I think we've already made our plane reservation. That's for February.
So, you won't be at the February 18th meeting? I mean, that, that, that will probably be a big one, but, but then we'll, you'll be here, if you're here on the 24th?
I won't be here, we're coming back on the 24th.
Because that would basically be kind of the summary, then? I mean, that would be-
I mean, is it possible that I could meet with someone beforehand and-
Oh, sure.
Cat and Melissa?
I would.
Yep.
I would like to do that, and I apologize, and I'm-
Although, although, you know, you're gonna get capital, enterprise, and general. What you're not gonna get is this kind of compilation, so you'll be in the hearings for-
For each of the areas.
For each of the budgets, and then if there's things that you need, concerns you have, another discussion, you could have that with Melissa and Kent separately.
Right. And you can also, of course, send a letter to council saying, you know, making clear what your concerns are so that we make sure they're aired in a public meeting.
Thanks, Melissa. Um, now we're moving on to council retreat agenda review, and, um, this turned into a giant miscommunication between myself and my clerk, the clerk. Um, so you've got the document in front of you that, um, I wrote and that was in the last packet. Um, the, the top part of the, of the document were the proposed agenda items from the, for a council retreat that were discussed at the previous meeting. Um, they were things that were brought up by myself and Mary Ann, so I just wanted to be able to, um, document those items, have those on a piece of paper, um, so that we didn't lose track of them. But the agenda that I'm proposing for the retreat, um, is, um, is below where it says tentative agenda, so, um, the, the point being that, um, some of the items that, that were proposed and that were, we were, Mary Ann was interested in talking about were more matters of, of policy and substance that, that citizens would be more directly interested in being involved with. What we typically, um, do at our retreats is basically talk about council, um, how, how we conduct council meetings, how we work together, um, how we conduct meetings, and how we work to become more effective. So, um, most of these items are, were actually kind of carryovers from our last retreat, anyway. So, um, I, I'm feeling like it's, you know, it would be something that will be helpful for us. I'll just, I'll just review it quickly, we'll do a welcome, we'll review the agenda, we're gonna do an around-the-table, just sharing our observations. We'll have an hour just to discuss agenda setting, moving projects forward and tracking progress. setting, moving projects forward and tracking progress. A little bit more than an hour to discuss the meeting format and how to achieve greater citizen involvement. Then we'll have some lunch. We'll talk about council boards and commissions and consideration of additional work committees. Another, that's for an hour. Then we'll have an hour to discuss most effective work strategy for council projects, including community collaborations, boards, commissions, and nonprofit partnerships. And then we'll end the day talking about social media. So, you know, we don't have a lot of, a lot of opportunity with having had to cancel the meeting last week. We're, we're meeting on Thursday, so we don't have a lot of opportunity to change. But does anybody have any comments? Anything they'd like to see changed?
I have a question. What about council goals? Where do, at what point does council do goals? And then where do they review them?
Well, they're on the agenda in new business tonight. And all that, basically what we're going to do is spend a few minutes just to talk about the process. Then we will, we will put them on the agenda. I mean, we've got a hugely full agenda for next week. I don't know if they'll be on, or next meeting. It is next week. I don't know if they'll be on next week, but we'll get them on. We'll have to get them on because we do need to connect them. Right. Those, that absolutely is a public discussion. But we do need to meld them with the budget. I mean, they're our goals. If they need to be funded, we need to know that. So when we get to that, we'll talk a little bit about how we've done the process in the past and how we see it moving forward. So are we agreed to the... Okay, great.
And where's, where's, I'm sorry, I'm very embarrassed, but where's?
It's at Yellow Springs Country at breakfast. And we're going to be having lunch and prepared by Nora.
Oh, look at us.
Yellow Springs Country, do you know where that is? Sorry. It's...
Hilton Road?
Hilton Road. It's Meredith, so 343 Meredith and... Yep.
In fact, tomorrow I will get you the agenda with directions and the whole, the whole bit. I was just waiting for that to finalize, so.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I'll get it.
I, I think we can, I, we can remove the CBE updates and information, I'm assuming, from the agenda. Okay, goals. Let's see. Goals and principles preliminary discussion. So you have the document in the packet. What this is, is a document that, that council kind of reviewed, I think it was, you know, maybe in October. It was Judith wanted to kind of finish up the process, see where we were. Do you be able to pass a document along to a new council? So goal setting is never easy. I mean, it's, it's, it's very complicated and it, and it can really, it can take a lot of time and it can get, you can kind of go around in circles. What we had done, what, what we realized at some point is that we were spending a lot of time with these big ideas, like deepen democratic decision-making process, processes with active citizen participation and effective representative governance, but not, not getting to the core of how we do that. So a few years ago, we maintained these large principles, these overarching principles, but decided to come up, we need to come up with specific strategies and specific goals to actually get things done. So that's worked out really well. I, you know, and I don't want to spend, it's getting late. I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I will read through, just for citizens, I will read through the principles. Principle 2 is be an excellent employer and provider of services within a responsible fiscal framework. Principle 3 is to be a welcoming community of opportunity for people of diverse races, ages, sexual orientations, belief systems, cultures, incomes, and abilities. Principle 4 is to pursue a strong economy that provides diverse employment, a stable tax base, and supports the values of the community. Principle 5 is to seek in all of our decisions and actions to reduce the carbon footprint of the community and encourage sound ecological practices throughout. And principle 6 is to provide careful, creative, and cooperative stewardship of land resources. So within those, we have, you know, we had a number. I mean, there's probably about a total of 25 or 30 goals, about three or four for each of those. And to the right, there is a note as to whether it's active, whether it's completed, or whether it's in process. So that's, and that's where, where Taki picked up the developed security cameras, surveillance, or security surveillance camera use policies. We did discuss it, but we never did develop the policies. So I guess what I, what I would suggest is that, what I want to know is, is this process and is this outline, these outline of principles, does that meet with council's approval? I mean, does council think that that's a good way to start and a good way to move forward?
I think it's a good way to start.
The principles kind of cover every area that we are about. They're about our, our commitment to the people, our commitment to be, you know, a good employer, our commitment to be a certain kind of community, our commitment to having an economy that supports it. So I do like it that I think the principles keep us kind of focused on all of our big overarching things. And then, that we then start thinking in terms of what do we need to do to try to forward those things.
So, so what I'm suggesting is that, is that probably not, we'll, we'll decide when we get into future agenda items and we start really looking at our agendas. But basically start to, start to come up with your, your goals, you know. Come up with, you know, goals and, and make them as, as, you know, kind of action oriented as possible, something that's achievable. And, and, you know, put them under the proper categories. And whether we do it at the next meeting or the meeting after, we'll start to have that discussion. I'd say we'll probably spend, you know, half hour, 45 minutes, maybe first time, maybe longer. It's really, these, these agendas are packed. So we may have to, we may have to strategize a little bit about how we're going to get the goals in. And, and we haven't always, you know, we've, we've tried diligently the past couple of years to get them early. We haven't always been actually even this early in getting the goals done. So, any other comments? Okay. And then the next topic is proposal for upgrades to council chambers. I will turn that over to Jerry.
Okay. I don't, an actual proposal today, we're still working on it. But one of the problems that we had been trying to deal with is the sound system within, within the building doing, doing meetings. So I started out working with Paul. But then we realized that we had three other major issues. Not only does council use this room, planning council uses it, the mayor's court uses it, and BCA uses it. So it's more than just council. One of the things that we're starting to run into is, is that the room has to be reconfigured for the mayor's court, then has to be put back, reconfigured for planning and BCA. And sometimes there are three meetings on one day. Each time the room is reconfigured, it takes about 15 minutes, but we have to call in two employees and pay them two hours. Okay? So, so that's an issue. Also, we had some security issues that we've been looking at. Okay? So what I'm in the process of doing is looking at reconfiguring the room, making use of, we've got a drop-down screen in the back by the clock, making use of the drop-down screen, making better use of Paul and the camera equipment, and also being able to make better use of our, our total meeting. What, and I'm going out to get estimates. I don't have a dollar amount. I don't want to throw out a dollar amount right now. But we're looking at replacing the carpet. From my understanding, the carpet on the floor was the initial carpet that, that was when, and when they remodeled here. Looking at getting a projector that will hang down from the ceiling. Now that'll serve a number of purposes. For presentations, we'll be able to use the, the screen that's already there versus using the wall. For our clerk, she will be able to, right now we use a lot of paper. She'll be able to portray our whole agenda and what we're going through on the screen versus half of the audience having paper. They'll have not. The mayor's court will be able to make that a stationary unit. And he, he has had, he's agreed that, you know, we don't need, he has a humongous podium and so forth. Literally, they roll in and he kind of sets up. I've been working with, with Paul, the mayor, Judy, our Jason, I did say the mayor, Jason, and I will be bringing Tony, the, the chief, in to, to look at what we can do for, and there are some things we need to do for security purposes. And so I'm bringing the chief. And we threw out some ideals that, that we think it'll, we, we haven't had a problem yet, so I don't want to, want to say we're trying. But since we're going to have to do some wiring changes and so forth to accommodate what Paul needs, it makes sense to go ahead and do some security upgrades out to the room and so forth. File cabinets and all this stuff that you see over here will be gone. And, but I have a, I have a sketch that, that we're working off of. And, but I think when we, we get the final plan, the biggest thing is I, I want to get a little more buy-in from council and then go out and then start getting some estimates. Our guys can do a lot of the work, but there may be about three items that we, we might have to contract for. And, but it, as you can see right now, that area is dark. And even if we turn the rest of the bank's lights on, it's not going to light it up. So, you know, we want to bring a little bit more light into the area and so forth. So, but if we're, we're kind of in agreement, then I will continue on and bring back an estimate on exactly what it's going to look like and what the cost would be. But we're, again, the, the three main issues that we're talking about is not having to change the room three times. And unfortunately, sometimes Judy gets caught here. And when we came in today, Judy had to lug in chairs. Or we call in guys for 15 minutes and pay them for two hours. So we're trying to get away from having to keep reconfiguring the room. Provide better sound so that people here can hear, plus the, those away from the, those that are watching Channel 5 will be able to hear and so forth. And then, of course, there are some security issues that we feel that we, we should correct. So that's kind of it.
Can I use Jerry's point as a springboard? I've been looking around and I, this is not, I think you need to start, this building has been in use about 22 years since it was remodeled. And I think it's held up well and it's still attractive. But after 22 years, there are little bits and pieces that are starting to look a little bit shabby. We've got signs with letters missing and chips in paint and cracked tiles and things like that. And it's about time to start thinking in terms of just a little cosmetic freshening for, for the whole structure, I think.
And just to be clear, I, you're talking about moving, reorienting us to that wall. We would be sitting with our backs to that wall, correct?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at right now unless someone comes up with something better. And the planning, planning, BCA, and the mayor are all in favor of going this way. And...
And then the people would be sitting here in rows, looking at us.
This way.
Yeah, looking.
And, and because of the protocol for the mayor's court, we will have to put a six foot, a six-inch platform. Because when he has court, protocol says that he should be higher than the audience. And that's why, that's why they haul in this humong, and, and that, the desk is so big, it takes up a storage room. And, and we'll be able to just use his podium to set on top of the desk and that'll give him the protocol that, that he needs and so forth. But what I'm excited about is the ability to use our screen. And, and we have an older community that have both hearing and sight problems. And by being able to project this small print up on the screen, and our clerk will be able to follow right along with the meeting. And the folks won't have to look there. They can just look over at the screen and stuff will be there. Should make it much easier for presentations. Because folks will be able to bring in a flash drive, plug it in, and work a button and, and make the presentations and so forth. You won't, won't have folks coming up to the mic here trying to fumble with paper and get their thoughts. We're, we're going to look at a, at a, at a podium, you know, not an expensive podium, but we're going to be looking at a podium where, you know, they, they can feel comfortable, you know.
And rest their materials.
Rest their papers or whatever and, and speak to council and so forth.
That would be good.
Yeah, well, I think we should definitely move forward.
You know, I, I don't want to throw out numbers now because just looking at a, at a projector, the figures are anywhere from 3,000 to 30,000. Okay?
Put a number in the budget just as a placekeeper.
And we also were, and I couldn't remember the gentleman that you talked about, Kent, that was going to come in and, and look at sound for us.
Miami Valley Cable Council, Rachel Rose, their engineer.
Right. So I want to get him in first and, because the sound is the thing was foremost. And then the other things we need to do along with that. So, okay?
That's very good.
Thanks, thanks, Jerry. I have one comment. And first, thank you for all this work. I think that'll be helpful. And as I look around the carpet, I don't see any problem with it. Maybe, maybe there is and I'm not seeing it. So I, I would put that low on the list. And if you do, if we do replace the carpet, I'd suggest we do an eco-friendly carpet. I mean, there's the, the kind now that uses recycled or that they recycle them.
Oh yeah. There are some tears that, you don't see them now in, so...
There are stains and tears.
Yeah, so, and I'm more concerned about the trip hazard with the tears and so forth. But they're, they're covered now. But by, when we build the new raised flooring over in that corner, I'd like it to be able to match it. And from what the research we've done so far, carpet squares are the most economical.
Yes, and they're eco-friendly.
And they're eco-friendly. So as they were out, the company, we would take them out, they reuse them and we put down new. So yes, we're eco-friendly, energy-friendly, sound-friendly, and of course, safely. We're looking, we're looking at all...
Friendly.
Friendly, yes.
Friendly, friendly.
And we could put in a checkerboard pattern.
We can use them to create a spatial pattern, though. I mean, it can be to create aisles and to define spaces with, with different colors. So, you know, there, there is definitely some design benefits to using the tiles. Okay, thanks, thanks, Jerry. Kent, briefly, anything in your manager's letter that you want to review?
Just a couple of things. One is that Ellis Jacobs' term on the Board of Zoni Appeals has expired. And I would like to request that you reappoint him. He's agreed to do it.
Oh, he's agreed, okay. Somebody else?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. One of the issues we, I met a couple of months ago with the principals in our inf...
One of the issues we, I met a couple of months ago with the principals in our information technology. Bruce Cornet has done a lot for us. We are now using Maveka as our internet service provider and they're working together. And we just issued a purchase order today and I'm hoping within a couple of weeks we will have Wi-Fi available throughout the building.
Yay! Hallelujah!
We've got a little bit of wiring.
Scott and Tina's son wanted it out there today. He was out playing his games.
I'd like to make just a couple of comments about the Center for Business Education. One is, one of the council members asked, if we borrow a million dollars to build the street, will we have any borrowing capacity left? And the answer is yes. It'll be nearly, we'll still have nearly $6 million of borrowing capacity left. So if the village wants to do other projects in the future, that's not necessarily a damper. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have a lot of work to do on our water system, both the distribution and the treatment and the sourcing. And we're looking at millions of dollars worth of work and frankly, if you asked me to pull a number out of the air for what kind of a rate increase we're looking at, I'd be saying, I'd be saying somewhere in the vicinity of 50%. It's a damn big increase. 20 years ago, over half of our utilities went to Vernet, Antioch Publishing, College. And that's just another reason to be thinking about economic development because those people aren't just taxpayers, they're also utility customers. And it helps us spread that burden over a much bigger base. So at that point, I'll stop editorializing.
Is that it?
That's all, yeah.
Okay. Judy?
Oh, it's been very, very busy and I'm looking forward to the retreat.
I want to congratulate Judy on Philip's adoption of her son Philip.
Oh, hurrah!
Congratulations.
And what did, what did you say in your report? You see she's growing the village one, one child at a time?
I think I'm doing a fairly good job.
You are.
You are.
Deserve special commendation.
Okay, future agenda items. There's a lot of them. So let's talk about, let's separate out 220, or 121. Let's, January 21st. We will have the CBE 2014 dash 01, CBE ordinance.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Let's see. What about the 214 dash 3, the easement with the Glen?
That's ready to go.
Okay.
That should be fast.
Just back on the, that first topic. That talks about the project manager.
No, that's, that's the resolution. I was talking about the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Gotcha.
Okay, so let's see, let's go down through, will Dayton Pool Management be at the January 21st meeting?
Yes, we're going to have them here.
Okay.
Okay. And then you would like to hear that resolution at that meeting, right? You would like to read, how does council feel about that? So we'll be getting a report from Dayton Pool Management on 2013 pool operations on the 21st, next Monday. Kent is also asking that we, that he, we at least authorize him to solicit bids. That's just him soliciting bids. That's not us committing to hiring anybody. Is, is council okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got another House Bill 5 resolution that, that will go quick. That's the municipal.
Taxation.
Taxation. So there's, there's another vote coming on that, so we want to make sure we get that in there. The, the ordinance, the resolution 2014 dash 01 about the, forget that, we'll talk about that in a minute. Let's see. And, and they, probably the biggest discussion will be the water report. Is John, John still here? John or Kent, are we ready for that? Will you be at that meeting?
I will be at the meeting. Scott Straley has promised that he would be there and have, and his email to me this morning that I forwarded to Kent was that he's done with the report, it's in their internal review. So I was hoping to have it by the end of the day today.
I haven't seen it.
Hopefully when I get into office tomorrow morning, I'll be calling him again. My intention is that we're going to, and Scott had promised me that he would be there on the 21st as well.
Okay.
Now if you choose to postpone it, you know, I could be in touch with him, but my intention is that we're, we're there.
Let's try to do it.
And, and we've got the budget. We've got.
Yeah.
We're, we're starting at 6 o'clock and we'll have the budget from 6 to 7.
That's not a problem with reporting, is it Judy? That we would be starting a meeting that's only a week from now at 6 o'clock?
No, because your notice goes in on Thursday for the meeting following. So, yeah, I know.
Right. And it's not an ordinance, we're not, it's not an actual ordinance or anything that we're voting on, so.
Right. Probably not even making decisions, but just gathering information.
So even without the budget, that's a lot of hefty agenda items.
I, I think we should put the village manager hiring process on there if we can to at least talk a little bit about where we're going with that.
And we just talked about goals.
Some of those are pretty fast.
Well, yeah, I, well, except for the, except for the CBE legislation, the other legislation will be incredibly fast. And I think, you know, I, I would hesitate, is there, I mean, even the easement, that will be fast. The pool report could be a little long, but I think Kent, we have to get on that because we've just, it's just too far into the season already.
There's no question. They do not have to, we can give them a very limited time to make their report and they can give us a long written report, but their report in this body should not be more than 10 or 15 minutes, I would say.
Right.
Five.
Yeah, I mean, if you tell, tell, when you talk to.
Five is good.
Five is good.
Yeah.
Five.
But have, but if they can have a written report, a more detailed written report and a brief, and, and, I mean, I don't know, does he even need to come? Maybe he doesn't even need to come. Maybe we can just.
Well, if people have questions, concerns, you know? Or does he? What do you think Judy, you're?
No, that's true. The only thing, but then I realized they had the position last year, I was just wondering if that would be some sort of bizarre unfair advantage or other. But, no, because they did it last year.
No, I mean, he has to make a report. I think he probably should come.
I think he needs to be here.
If he can be here, I think that would be helpful. So, okay.
Be able to confront him if they've got concerns.
So we'll, when I sit down and do, when I sit down and do the agenda review on Monday, well, when are we going to do it? Tomorrow? We're doing it in the morning. I'm going to, I'm going to throw some, some time, some times at this. And I remember, I don't know if you remember, we used to have times.
Yes, I think that's a.
And we took them off and I think we maybe will revisit putting those times on again.
I think that's a great idea.
And then, so we've got, we've got one jam-packed meeting, so then the, the Antioch College Updates, Mark Roosevelt, I've invited him to come on February 3rd. And I will tell him brief, briefly, you know, it doesn't need to be a long, but, you know, clearly there's some communication. I think that, you know, we'd like to hear.
Yeah.
Some of the things the college is proposing. I think the TIF, the ordinance about the TIF, that can certainly hold for a while. That doesn't even have a date. And then the project manager for the CBE, you know, that could be on, on track for that meeting too. So.
February 3rd.
February 3rd, right. How long do you think of the village manager hiring Brian?
Not long. We're just going to sort of bring forth the recommendations from Cecil based on our interviews. So, and I'll have a written report that everybody can look at beforehand, so we can do that quickly.
So maybe, just, just so we're kind of on track and, and since we just talked about goals, let's have just a very initial, and maybe we won't even talk about goals, just start, start to compose them and put them in the packet and we'll see how much time we have to actually discuss them.
That seems fine.
But it won't be a priority.
Do you mean that each of us should be putting, submitting?
Yeah. And submit them to Judy for the packet.
Yeah, if you, if you submit things to me, I can put them in a track changes draft that you folks can, just makes it a little quicker to look at and sort of see what you're considering changing. So if you can get those to me by Thursday afternoon.
This, this year's.
Yeah. Oh.
That's our retreat. So basically try to get them in the next couple of days.
Yeah. Can I have a motion for what I hope is a very brief executive session for the purpose of the discussion of the hiring of a public official?
So move.
Second.
All, Judy, would you please call a roll?
Intro.
Yes.
Ask one. Sim?
Yes.
Yes.
The queen?
Yes. Thank you all.
And while we've got the cameras still on, I just want to mention that next week's meeting is on Tuesday, the 21st. I saw some calendars have the wrong date.
Oh.
Oh, Tuesday, right. Did I have that correct?
I do.
But where, what do I do? Submit?
Oh, just sign down here.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Can you pass those to Karen?